Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this morning's September 18th meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors. We're going to start with an invocation by Pastor Tony, and if you would remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to pray this morning. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for today. We thank you for this wonderful country that we are blessed to be able to live in. We thank you for just all the wonderful blessings that you give to each and every one of us, and we thank you for this form of government where we are allowed as citizens to participate. Father, we ask you to be with each one of our supervisors, give them wisdom and discernment, and guide them as they make decisions that impact all of Mojave County. Father, may all of the discussions and the decisions made today be beneficial for our communities. Father, I ask you just to be with each one of our communities, be with those who are hurting or struggling, be with our first responders and protect them, our healthcare workers and others who serve. Father, we ask you to be in our schools, be with our local businesses and the owners and employees, and just help everyone here be able to grow and be prosperous. Father, we thank you that we can come together and that we can do business of this community. Father, just bring us all together and help us to support one another. We just love you and we thank you for everything. We pray for these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors may by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03, A34 and 7. Looking for a motion in action to call for an executive session to be held on October 2nd, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03, A34 and 7 to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk. You've heard that motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I speak to have it? Official business to come before the board. Discussion of pending or contemplated litigation, claims, and demands. Attorney S. Lynn.
Nothing to report to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Committee and/or legislative reports. Supervisor Bishop.
Good morning. I attended the grand opening of the Mojave County Fair. It was better than last year, and I'm sure next year will be even better as we become more familiar with our processes. I had a lot of comments that people really enjoyed it this year, so thank you to all the volunteers and all the 4-H people, all the workers and the participants and the vendors. If I missed anybody, thank you for that, too. Other than that, I attended a dinner with the ADOT staff in Kingman, and then the following morning, I attended and spoke at their Arizona Department of Transportation meeting that was held here in this auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. I, too, was there at the Mojave County Fair to cut the ribbon and signal the beginning of the fair. Everyone seemed to be having a pretty good time. I think the place looked much, much better than it has in the past. Had a lot of positive feedback. I even got some emails about it. People have noticed that we have improved on some of the ways we do things. There's still a little bit more to be done. I hope we'll talk about it in the future, but I was very, very happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Nothing today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson.
How's your mission here?
Thank you. I'll report that Governor's Office Rural Groundwater Committee had a meeting last week and still on track to provide recommendations for legislative action next session. I don't believe we have a lobbyist report from high ground, county manager's report, manager elders.
Good morning, Chairman, board members. No report today.
Thank you. We'll move to the call to the public. First up is Christopher Darte.
Christopher Darty, Mojave County taxpayer. On July 4th, 1946, congressional candidate Democrat John F. Kennedy said, "Conceived in Grecian thought, strengthened by Christian morality, and stamped inedibly into American political philosophy, the right of the individual against the state is the keystone of our Constitution." Yesterday, September 17th, was Constitution Day. On this day in 1787, our founders signed the document that was to forever limit the powers of the government in favor of our sacred, God-given individual rights. Sadly, 236 years later, the Constitution has been ignored in favor of governmental and non-elected bureaucratic agency powers. We see this happening in Washington, D.C., in our state, and in Mojave County. 2020 brought us the China flu liberty grab from the CDC all the way down to our local county health departments. Businesses lost forever, schoolchildren lost in the shuffle, jobs lost, dignity sacrificed for a poisonous shot in the arm and a mask on the face. Now we're seeing it in the form of solar and hydrogen farming seeping its way into the northern Arizona desert disguised as green energy. Destruction of our land, our water, our homes, and our family farms, topping it off with a housing needs assessment that shoves the U.N.-driven diversity equity and inclusion in our faces, admonishing us to accept it or to be canceled. Mojave County, we are losing it, losing our freedom, losing our dignity, losing our humanity, and losing our God-given rights. One edict, one mandate, one sneaky under-the-table power grab at a time. Our elections are a joke, our border is wide open, our children are being hijacked by gender-affirming care. We are in a sad, sad state. John Adams was right when he said, "Our Constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other." In the Book of James, Chapter 1, Verse 21, the Lord says, "Therefore put away all filthiness and extreme wickedness, and receive with meekness the implanted word which is able to save your souls." Amen. Thank you.
Christopher Klug.
Good morning. I'm Christopher Klug, and I'm here to help encourage the public's access and use of the grand jury. To accomplish this for the betterment of all, it is necessary that need be shown. Because of time constraints, I'm only able to discuss two scenarios. The first situation involved George and Doris Ward. They were in their 80s. George was accused of spousal abuse. Doris was removed from his life for about two years. An organization called MIML was responsible. I contacted Sonny Borelli and Steve Moss. We found an attorney for George. In court, George was granted Skype visitation. George got one visit, then his wife died. He finally saw her on a slab. The second situation involves Mike Robbins and his convicted felon son Stephen. This situation is ongoing. Mike Robbins is an 82-year-old retired policeman. He's worth millions. His son Stephen had his father declared incompetent and assumed power of attorney without knowledge or consent. Mike Robbins has been committed to a dementia facility. No one is allowed to visit as ordered by his son. Mike belongs to a lunch group comprised of retired law enforcement officers. One of the officers tried to help Mike, and the son filed a restraining order against the officer. None of the retired officers are allowed to visit. No friends, no acquaintances, nobody. Mike is a prisoner, as one of the officers said. At the present time, because of Mike's son's power of attorney, Mike is unreachable. I have called the police, contacted Adult Protective Services, and spoken with retired law enforcement lunch group. I even acquired forms for revocation of power of attorney from the Adult Protective Services. However, Mike Robbins has to sign the forms in the presence of a notary. Things are at a standstill. When I asked Mike's son if he realized what he was doing to his father, his comment was, "He's 82. He's had a good run. He's where he belongs." Do you think the grand jury might be interested in a case like this? Mike's sanity and his life could depend on it. Thank you for the audience this morning.
Walter Spar.
I want to reiterate a little bit what Chris just presented to you. I'm Walter Spar from Lake Havasu City, and I'm here to support. I'll exaggerate a little bit and say I've already sent you about 100 pounds of documents with what it seems like to me. But I want to go back in history a little bit. Several years ago, people were put to death because somebody started a rumor that they were witches, and so they killed a whole lot of people. In Europe, they'd kill tens of thousands of people because somebody started this rumor about witches. This is... If those people had access to something like a grand jury, they would have survived. But there's nobody to go to. This is a photograph of a facility in Lake Havasu City that is owned by Mike. Mike Robbins is probably a millionaire. He served 30 years as a deputy sheriff and retired, and he has this facility where he has his hot rod cars in it, and that's his whole life. You've already seen the photograph of his home. He definitely is a millionaire. Well, his son came to town and got him institutionalized. His son is a convicted felon for fraud and theft, and nobody is allowed to go in to Mike. The county authority who helps people in this kind of a position, they're denied access to Mike. A police officer was denied access. Nobody can get to Mike, and his friends don't have... We don't have standing to go into a court of law to start a lawsuit on his behalf. Mike would have to sign a document. We can't get anything to get in there. There was a lady who knows Mike, and she has a relative that's in that institution, and so she had access. And so she snuck into Mike's room one day because Mike knows her and she knows Mike. Mike was drugged. His eyes were open. He couldn't even recognize her for crying out loud. Mike is probably going to die in there. When you cut somebody off of their whole life, and suddenly they just start digressing. And I'm going to skip one because you've already heard about George Ward, but people need access to a legal authority to save them from inappropriate government behavior.
Thank you. Kenny Works.
Good morning. Kenny Works, Yacka, Arizona. I want to read from the September issue of Chronicles Magazine, words by Taki Theodorakopoulos. "I'm writing this dispatch from the birthplace of oracy." I'm quoting, by the way. "The art of public speaking, the first perfected by the Athenian Demosthenes, a speaker so eloquent and influential he managed to force a great Aristotle to move back to Macedonia, his birthplace. Demosthenes did not like nor trust northern Greeks like Aristotle and his pupil, one Alexander the Great. It was akin to the same distrust that many American Southerners felt for the interfering Northerners circa 1861. Oracy, needless to say, is a skill equal to numeracy and literacy, one mastered at school in my day, but judging by today's public speakers, no longer taught at any level." But let's put it another way. When was the last time you saw the movie where a hero spoke well, like an aristocrat? If you watch Turner Classic Movies, you've heard actors articulate and pronounce their verbs beautifully. In today's films, eloquent speech usually means the person is up to no good, a phony, and a crook. Today's actors mumble on cue. When was the last time you heard and understood every word pronounced in a recently made movie? The inability to speak well was once upon a time a great hurdle to overcome. Yes, it was unfair because not everyone could afford to send their children to a posh school where they learn to speak clearly and to get their ideas across. But in today's schools, pupils are taught that speaking properly is elitist, snobby, and not with the times. Tears of British society were always separated by manners of speech. It is still split, but the other way around. A posh accent today is suspect when applying for a job. A working-class or regional accent is the winning ticket. America never suffered from such a class distinctions, and its regional accents are joy, at least for this writer who loves southern drawls. But an extreme regional accent does not exclude oracy. In the past, there were great American public speakers of all accents. Effing this and effing that has become the lingua franca of today's celebrities. Needless to say, all this effing does is show how limited a brain power these freaks really are. Masters of the devastating retort, these inarticulate vulgarians are not. I learned to speak clearly, and you will have no limits." Thank you.
Wayne Hollands.
Good morning. Wayne Hollands, Golden Valley, Chairman, Supervisor. I'm going to speak on item 18 on the consent agenda. We're going to apply for grants for $25 million to put solar on low-income housing. Great. I like solar, especially on houses and parking lots and stuff like that. If we have to have them otherwise, then if you put them in right and you're stuck with them, you might as well make more money and get more money from them than just the solar. But the problem I see was with our Arizona Corporation Commission, who controls the pulvody, our utilities and stuff like that. They're trying to reduce the amount that we're getting paid for the solar energy that we produce so they can sell it back to us at more of a profit, and then claim that what they're paying us for making their electricity is a subsidy for the people who are installing the solar panels. I don't know whose payroll they're on, but ACC is not for the people. They're already paying us a minimum amount, and then they're making double and triple on power that we're supplying our equipment for. They got the line that's delivered to that line for free, and yet they want to charge us all kinds of fees and stuff to deliver on top of the profit that they're allowed to make anyway. We need to have a voice that will go up there and stand up for us, take care of the people instead of the corporations. There are... I mean, how much more do they want to cheat us? We supply all the equipment. We supply the panels. We got our contracts, and all they're doing is the electricity goes to them, and they want to pay us less money. What's the incentive? They're not going to really gain anything from 25 mil- They're not going to really gain anything from $25 million worth of money if they're not getting a decent return on their investment. So I think somebody ought to look into that. Thank you.
Chuck DeShazer.
Yes, my name is Chuck DeShazer, 8778 Polaris Road, Topoc, Arizona. I'm here to discuss abatements. I know we'll be discussing them later on on several items, but this is an overall problem that I'm seeing. I would ask this board to suspend the abatements that Development Services is doing until they can figure out what they're doing. Even though it's in writing under 2020-7 of how to do it, they don't seem to be able to follow that correctly as the law states. On top of that, I've also gone to the county attorney's office and found out that, according to what I've been told by William Davis, that we do not have a legal requirement to do a title search, but there's two, three, four title searches showing up on one property in the past that I've searched through the abatements that have come before this board. We're also, I've spoken with three of the supervisors in person over this past 10 days or so. The fourth supervisor refused to, yeah, I guess he was too busy, so I met with his secretary. And what I'm finding on a lot of these abatements is just total inconsistencies with a lot of different things. There's one particular abatement that was done that the Development Services took 87 and a half hours of administrative time. The contractor took 12 hours to actually clean up the property. And they billed out administrative time for like $400, which means that person spent two weeks and a day or two weeks and a day of man-hours spent on this one particular project from an administrative. And $400 billed means they're working for about $450 an hour. And yet, the Development Services has never been before this board, that I can find, to have gotten any kind of schedule for abatement charges. They go out and you guys have to vote on how much they can charge for a building permit or this permit or that permit, grading permits. But they just make up their own $50 an hour, which is more than the chief building official is being paid per hour to do. On top of everything else, I found in the paperwork, they billed for four hours of a lost file on their end. At $50 an hour, just, you know, that's 200 bucks. They're doing inspections. I only have four seconds left, so I'd also like to mention that going through all of these abatements, they have never put any paperwork in there to show that the Arizona Historical Preservation Officer has ever been checked with before they tore down a building. And that's in the law under 11-268 Section G.
Thank you. Katie Manning.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Katie Manning. I live in Kingman. My concern today is regarding dollars. This is an article that was written back in September of 2019 in The Miner. "Mohave Among Arizona Counties With Lowest Tax Burden," the firm says. My concern is, we are in a financial bind. I have no way of seeing with each department, are they allowed to increase their budget every single year? I look at the Sheriff's Department, and you keep cutting, cutting, cutting. You've cut in all areas, assessor's office here, there, everywhere, to meet our budget. Is there anything that you can put in print so that we can see if we need to restructure our property taxes? I know people won't be happy with that. And instigate a sales tax here in Mohave County? I have no idea what the other counties are doing. We're a big county. We have very few folks that are in all the different offices and departments, et cetera. I really feel we've been cut back to the bare bone. We need to do something to get ourselves back on the right track. And this was written in 2019, prior to the pandemic, prior to COVID, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And you look at everything. Milk used to be a buck, a half a gallon. You get it on sale, a buck 75 if you're lucky, and you have a coupon now. Things have been increased. But where are we county-wise? Do we have it in our budgets? How much we're allowed to increase each department every year? Do we have contingencies? We're in big trouble. Our Sheriff's Department has been cut by 13, 14 officers already. And more will probably be cut, which is horrendous for us. We're the largest county in California, San Bernardino County, the next one over off the state border. But we're in trouble. We need to get word out to the public what we can do, where we are, and explain it. The Miner is a great paper. And it's a good way to let folks know that we are in trouble and we need to get on the ball and do committees, rules, regulations, whatever it is that we can do to keep us solvent and not have our own ratings go down financially. That's my concern. Thank, good, I did it. Thank you.
Greg Bifford.
Hello, and for the record, my name is Greg Bifford. You should have a letter that I asked to have put on the record. I'm not going to spend much time on the letter, but I'm going to tell you that I'm a resident of Mohave County and a taxpayer. I'm a veteran, retired police officer, and somebody who spent 33 years in government service at a variety of different levels. State, county, federal positions, department head positions, administrative positions. And I'll tell you from my experience that over those 33 years, it's not as much about what politicians or the government tells you. It's about what they don't say. It's the lies through omission. It's the lies through omission, what they're not telling you. And I'll be coming here for the next, however long it takes, as outlined in my letter, until the general public, because I'm doing this as a service to them as well, educating them on the big lie. The big lie that continues, the elephant in the room that people don't want to talk about. You all don't want to talk about it, and I'm talking about your response during COVID-19. And what every day is now, if you have a 20,000-foot view, which you should in the positions that you're in, you understand that slowly, our national sovereignty and our individual sovereignty is being eroded. Every day. Every day, it's being eroded because of the big lies, the things that aren't said. And so I'm here, and I'm going to be holding a high level of accountability, not only to the Constitution, and this is a good time to come up here and talk about this, but to morality. I've heard, you know, people, Chris comes up and talks about the Constitution all the time to educate people about it. People need to be educated. It's a lack of knowledge about the machinations that go on behind the scenes in government and the things that they don't say. How budgets are done, shell games that are played, the Delphi technique, you know, to give people the appearance that they have a choice in a lot of these decisions that are being made. I'll be exposing all of that to give the general public an idea because I told you two years ago that this was a crisis of consciousness. We are experiencing, and I think I used the term at the time, a socially engineered perception crisis. People's minds have been taken. They operate in a very low vibrational frequency, most people do, because they get most of their information spooked fed to them from the media. So they're only getting what they're told. It's about what they're not being told. That's important. So I'll be talking about what they're not being told. You have my letter. If any of you want to meet with me prior to me coming up here in future, I'll be happy to meet with you. Thank you.
Scotty McCorr.
Well, I might as well start off again with Jeannie Kinch. There's a new-
Excuse me, please state your name for the record.
You don't know it by now?
I need you to state it for the record, please.
Scotty from Bullhead.
Thank you.
There's a new thing out there that's been coined. It's called fear porn. F-E-A-R, pornography. This is where the government makes us old farts and young kids. An example would be Dr. Fauci and his COVID. He made everybody in this United States scared, and the whole damn world was scared. That's fear porn. This is what I've heard of, talk about where we're being fearful about, we either do solar and rip up the properties and all this stuff. That's fear porn. Solar and all this crap. Now, this gets me right back to here, upstairs in the assessor's office. Property fraud. Property fraud. She has scared me so much that I'm going to lose my property. And she wants $50 for me to get the protection that I don't have the sheriff there putting me out of my property. $50 I have to pay. Well, I'm not scared. I don't believe in Jeannie Kinch's fear porn. $50, where's that going? In the general fund or in a milk can subsidy up there for lunchtime? Where's this $50 going for this fear porn? That goes down to the recorder's office now. Oh, I guess Jeannie's going to try and close the Bullhead City Office.
Sir, if that's a GOP thing, then this board has nothing to do with it.
No, I'm talking about the assessor's office.
Thank you.
An item 35. You're going to pay all this monthly, you know, she's going to try and close her office. Don't do it. It's not going to save the money. Because you're still going to have all those other offices in there, which you have to have. So now, two weeks ago, you guys gave 20,000, I believe it was number 16 and 17, you gave the recorder's office $20,000 plus and $40,000 plus. Is that going to be accounted for penny to penny? Is that going to be getting dead people off the rolls, off the voters' rolls? Or people that are moving, are they going to be taken off this rolls? If that goes for that, that's fine. But if she's just going to put it in her milk can fund, I want an accounting of those. Where that $50 is going? That fear monger, I'm tired of that fear porn. I hope that catches on. And the rest of it, well, 20 seconds on the GOP closing down there. They're finally going to vote down there to open it up again. I met with Hildy. And I'm kind of disappointed in some of the people that are going to get to vote. Why is the mayor of Bullhead getting to vote and his wife getting to vote? Why?
Jennifer Esposito.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito, candidate for District 4 County Supervisor, 3211 East Navally Avenue, Kingman, Arizona. First, I would like to thank the chairman for allowing me to speak on an agenda item, a consent agenda item that was pulled last time. The problem is, under your new call to the public rules, those consent agenda items are supposed to be smashed into the three minutes that we get to talk about other things. And when there are so many items that are controversial in the consent agenda, it really does have a chilling effect on free speech of the constituents that they're supposed to cram everything in to call to the public and not get to address consent agenda items that may be pulled. The other thing I would like to point out is that I did sign up to speak at the last meeting on Agenda Item 57, and I was not called. I'd like to point out to the board that executive session is for receiving legal advice, not for making decisions about things in executive session. And Agenda Item 57 is very similar to an item that I signed up to speak on today. At the last meeting, it was discussion on possible action. Provide the Board of Supervisors with an update and legal advice regarding litigation against Atlantic Specialty Insurance Company and KP Ventures Well Drilling and Pump Company in Mohave County, case number blah, 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 and provide instruction and guidance to the county attorney regarding any actions the board would like the county attorney to take in these cases. But there was no update. There was no public legal advice. There was only, essentially, I make a motion to do what we all talked about in executive session. So those of us who are in the Golden Valley Improvement District, who are following the cases, as I'm sure you are hopefully all well aware, there is a deadline to serve the defendants in that case. And I can only assume, because nothing was discussed in public, that that's what the item was about. But when you come before the public and you've already made a decision and you're supposed to get an update and advice and then discuss, debate, make your decision in public, it doesn't look very good to the public that you made your decision behind closed doors. So I would just like to point that out because I know that there are a couple of items on today's agenda regarding legal advice or legal action that may be taken in some cases. And it disappoints me that I should have to point this out because you all have been here long enough to know this. You have legal counsel who I'm sure absolutely knows this. And even if you do make up your mind behind closed doors, the appearance that you did that does not sit well when you come out and you don't do what the actual agenda item says. You say, you know, we made up our mind in executive session. Let's do what we told him to do in executive session. I'd just like to state that on the record. So hopefully, maybe you will reconsider the call to the public rules. But thank you for letting me speak on the one item that was in the consent agenda because my input, I felt, was very important. Thank you.
We have one proclamation this morning, which I do not have in front of me. Approve the adoption of a proclamation to declare September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Awareness 2023 in Mohave County. And I'll open that up for a motion if that requires a motion.
Motion to approve.
You've heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Supervisor Bishop, would you like to remove any of the items from consent?
No.
Thank you. Supervisor Angus.
18.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number 12, 16, 21, 25, 30, and 36.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson.
None, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 12, 16, 18, 21, 25, 30, and 36.
So moved. Second.
You've heard that motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 12. Supervisor Gould.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move item 12 along next to item 37, 38, and 39 and take testimony on all four of those items and then proceed to vote individually on all four of those items.
Is that a motion?
As a motion.
You've heard that motion.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. We will move on to, we'll set that one aside. We will go to item number 16. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was looking through this agenda item, and it reminded me of a question that I had had. And on page three of the backup for this item, it shows zero for building leases, and this is a grant. And I've always wondered, and it's an important question now that we're supposedly in a budget crisis, do grants actually pay for the space that the person working on that grant occupies in the building? Are we really running 100% on grant money? Are we actually running on general fund money to provide facilities for that employee that's working on the grant?
Is Director Smith, you want to come down to the podium?
Good morning, Chairman Lincolnfelter, Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Gould. In regards to your question, it really would apply to which specific grant that would be and how those funds are allocated. But yes, we do, for the people that are in the space of the county building within the Community Services Department, we do fund those positions, and we do pay for the space that we rent as well.
But yet, there's a zero in the column for building lease on this application.
Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Gould, in regards to that, in regards to this particular one, right, it's the staffing of the positions, right? They explain it like this, so the housing we have, I'd have to go back and count the number of different grants that we have in the department, but we have several different grants within the department that those employees would work on. In regards to this position, all we're doing here with this is just reallocating the funds from leasing of the particular permanent housing to the rental-based assistance because there's more of a need there. That's what this item's for. In regards to each of those and how it's allocated in space, in regards to internet and other services here, we do pay for that through the county fund as well.
So is it, it's accounted for on some other document, then?
That would be correct. Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Gould, that would be correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I move that item 16 be adopted.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Move to item number 18. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you very much. This item is to authorize submission of a grant application to the Environmental Protection Agency titled Solar for All during FY 24 of 2030 for $25 million in grant funds from the Office of the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund to be used in partnership between Mojave County Community Services Department, Mojave County WIOA, One Stop Korea, blah, blah, blah. So here we are again, grants, money falls from the sky. I know we, you know, in some areas we just talked about, seems like, you know, we didn't make the rules, this is how it goes, we send our money to Washington, they dole it out, make us beg, put strings on it, we all know about that. But there are some that are so egregious, so in your face, you've lost, just like what Chris was talking about earlier, and this is one of them. $25 million, just so you all know, this was part of the Inflation Reduction Act. It was, which Joe Manchin, who voted on it, put it over the top, has said publicly it was the biggest mistake of his career. And he's made a few, as we know. So this one, in the backup, it says, "Solar Energy Investments in and Benefiting Low-Income and Disadvantaged Communities Support the Climate and Equity Goals of the United States, Achieving the Biden-Harris Administration's Goal of 100% Clean Electricity Grid by 2035." It goes on and says, "Similarly, solar generation in and benefiting low-income and disadvantaged communities advances the Biden-Harris Administration's equity and environmental justice priorities as detailed in Executive Order 14091, which is further advancing racial equity and support for underserved communities through the federal government." So although this is nicely titled, "Solar for All," it's not. It's low income, getting there, you know, it just, you know, logically, you say, there are people who can't afford food, they can't, and this is what they want to do with your money. They want to put it on top of households because it's all, everything we're seeing, and I was back in Washington, I talked about this one, everything is climate. This is how they're going to take off. I, you know, I'm not going to get into that, this is the Board of Supervisors, but we all know what this means. So $25 million is a lot of money, and I'm sure that there is an argument that can be made, it's going to bring in money to the community, it's going to be, but I cannot in good conscience vote for this, no matter what the amount of money was, because then I am complicit in what this, what this is supposed to do, which is basically take over our rural communities. So thank you.
Other discussion or comments? Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's interesting that this is titled the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Bill. No one really takes into consideration what's called the embedded energy cost of a solar panel. A photovoltaic panel takes four and a half years of sitting in the sun to make the power that was consumed during its manufacture. It was not manufactured with clean energy, it's manufactured with dirty energy in China, where they not only wear face masks for COVID, they also wear face masks for particulates because they can't breathe in their filthy cities. So it's just a, it's just another word game from the federal government. Thank you.
Other discussion? Supervisor Bishop.
Taking politics out of this for a second, I would like to hear from Director Smith and see what you can share with us about this.
Good morning, Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Bishop, Board of Supervisors. In regards to this opportunity, there was $7 billion that was awarded. The opportunity for Mojave County, when you think of it, this would be an opportunity for us or for the county to be able to receive funds. So when we had the storm that came through here a couple of years ago and we lost power, and all those people were down in Mojave Valley and Bullhead, didn't have a way to turn their power on or have power, this particular program would have helped. So it's different from other solar that you may have seen applied for. I've looked at the solar, would I put it on my house? No, I would not. But that's not me. I live in Kingman. I have the ability to have a strong electrical source. If you live in some of the other rural areas, you may not have that particular grid that would allow for this. So this particular product and this particular opportunity, I believe for those that live off-grid or could be off-grid, they would qualify for this program as well. So this would be an opportunity for them to have a backup system, so they would have a battery. So when the power does go down in that particular area, because we do experience some of those things from time to time, they would have the ability to have access. And this would also go to taxpayers. So all of the people that here that pay property taxes, they would qualify for this, even though they're low income, yes, they still pay property taxes and would have that opportunity. So there are some benefits to the program. And then I would just go on to say that, when you think of solar, this isn't the big mega solar company coming in, this is helping people that need to have the ability to have solar. When you look at, in regards to the amount of water, because I know water's an issue here, we always talk about that, right? And we reached out to industry experts on this particular matter. And if you look at the amount of water that it takes to wash these particular solar panels over the course of years, less than one bathtub a year, right? And so it's less than, if you take one less bath a year, you'll have enough water to wash the panels and then be able to do that. So in regards to the water, the consumption, if we want to get into exact details, 1,000 square foot home takes about 12 to 24 gallons of water to wash that particular panel. So it's not a large source of water consumption as well for this particular program. We can also then move to our power grid, speaking to some of the industries, and they were quoted in the backup as well, from Schneider Electric and then from Mojave Co-op in Bullhead and Mojave Valley. But the grid is stressed right now. This would take three to four gig, mega gigs off of the particular grid, and would also help the community as well in regards to moving forward. So those are a couple of things that I would say is positive about this particular opportunity. The things that may discount us right from the beginning is that the EPA held a webinar last week, and in the webinar, they stated that they were only going to award 60 awards, up to 200 or 400 million per award would be the ceiling. And then depending on how many people live in each area, would be the amount of money that they would allocate to that particular area. With that being said, Mojave County would be on the smaller because of the population size, and so then we would apply for the 25 million. However, with that being said, if we applied individually, there's no way we would qualify. And I say we, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. If the Board of Supervisors granted us the authority to apply, we then would have that opportunity. However, what the webinar said was that they're only going to fund, most likely, one from each particular state. The state of Arizona, after I heard that, we reached out to the governor's office, had a conversation with the governor's Resiliency Committee. In that committee, they stated that they were going to apply for the funds and that they were going to go after the 240 million, which then would be allocated to the state of Arizona through this program. They're going to run it differently. They're going to run it much different than what we would have run it here in Mojave County or what we've laid out here for you as well. Their plans are vastly different than what you'll see here. They haven't disclosed that. I haven't seen their full report or their grant opportunity, but on the call, they did kind of lay out how their vision for this would be done within the state of Arizona. So there's a lot there in regards to some of the other things that we may have heard if we take these solar panels and what happens 30 years from now. And that, those are some great questions, and those have come up before. There's some things that have come forward, and there are some companies that have actually developed the ability to recycle, and we have those here as well, and I can just share that, just so that that information's there, and if anyone wants that information. It's called Solar Cycle, right? So that's one company right now that's really big, that's taking the panels and then redistributing those, taking them apart and recycling those different parts. Am I an expert on the field of all of those different things? No, I'm not. But those are just some of the basic things that I wanted to mention here. If you talked about the funding opportunity and what that would look like, it's really about $35,000 per home to get that particular home up and running. This would cost no, this would, to run this program, it would cost the taxpayers no additional money to the general fund or any funding of that nature for us to facilitate this program. But we would provide somewhere between 400 and 500 taxpayers the opportunity to receive solar for this program as well. It wasn't in our design here as well, but when we talk about affordable housing or different opportunities, this program, if directed by the board, could also be used for affordable housing, and then that could help in regards to the developers and their costs as well for the power that actually goes into the development of more manufactured, not manufactured, but Lytec low-income house tax credit opportunities, which you'll hear about today. If you also think of this as well, when you have an opportunity to see Agenda Item Number 41, you will also see today that the 50% of the housing needs that are going to be needed from Mojave County are going to fall between the 80% and lower AMI. Those are the numbers. So I'm sharing this information, and I'll answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Were you done, Supervisor Bishop?
I'd like to ask a question or two--
Please.
--of my. Mr. Smith, because I'm the county supervisor for most of the remote area of Mojave County, specifically Dolan Springs, White Hills, and Meadview Chloride area, they've experienced some power outages over the last couple of years. And what I gleaned from that is when there's no electricity, there's no way to pump water from the individual water wells into their homes. So not only when you lose electricity, you also lose the ability to be able to pipe water into your home. And many of those homes, we discovered, don't even have a hand pump during those situations where you can hand pump water out of your well. So you've got a well, you've got plenty of water, you've just got no access to it. So I see this as a plus for some of those rural areas that will continue to have electrical problems because the grid is overtaxed right now. We all know that. So my question to you, I know the homeowners of their low income would qualify for some of these grant monies, but would community centers as well be able to apply for solar so that they could make their community centers also an emergency center for times such as that?
Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Bishop, members of the board, this particular grant, that would not be included, but this is just the beginning of opportunities for solar that's coming. There'll be more funding as well in the future for that opportunity that, if directed, we would apply for and have that opportunity to do as well. But with this particular grant, that would, this would not cover community centers. However, what they did put into the grant, having read the backup and the information for it, is that if you have a commercial building, but you also have tenants within that commercial building for housing, which you can, you will see down in Bullhead, I believe they're going to having multifamily above some of the shopping centers in other areas. I believe they changed the building code recently to allow for that. With that being said, if there's facilities or houses there or something of that nature, and it's going to support that local housing area, those, this program then could be used as well to help facilitate that. But once again, that wasn't something that we put forward within our proposal that we would bring to the Board of Supervisors, but if the Board of Supervisors directed us to look at different options, we would do that. This was really, when we were looking to apply, was four to 500 low-income homes that would meet the threshold for this program. But long-winded question, there'll be other future opportunities.
So these are low-income home applications, but you mentioned affordable housing. Would this be offered as an incentive to have contractors build affordable housing and have solar added to that home? Could we provide an incentive to have housing like that built with this grant monies?
Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Bishop, that would be something that if directed by the board and a plan was set forward, that could happen. In Bullhead, they actually have two projects they have not broken ground on that are Lytec. Those will be moving forward in the near future. One is an 80 development unit, the other one is 28, I believe. Both of those are Lytec. If the developer approached us, and this was included, and they did follow the Lytec guidelines as this as well, and this is something that the board moved forward, it could be adopted, I believe, and put through. I haven't read all the exact verbiage for the Lytec, but that is something in here in the backup that is plausible. So it would, it would help because it can change their payment standards as well.
Okay, I guess that's all the questions I have. It doesn't sound like it's going to do a lot of good for Mojave County, other than for a few people that are below the threshold income-wise. It seems like a lot of money were so few would qualify. Am I reading that wrong?
Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Bishop, it is a lot of money. What I would say is that if you look at our history in facilitating grants, and when I come back in front of the board in three days or two days, depending how you look at it, all of our programs through the community services develop, through community services, we're 2% to 3% for admin fund. If you look at 2% to 3% admin fund against any social service agency, that's the gold standard, right? So if you're under 5%, you're the gold standard. We're at 2% or 3% in regards to our admin facility and charges that we actually do, and I'm proud of that, of the different services. In regards to this grant and who it would help, it would help-- In regards to this grant and who it would help, it would help 400 to 500. If you also look at what they're looking for in the grant, they're actually looking for 75% of program funds to actually go to homes. We're going to do better than that, right? It's community services. If it was directed by the board and had that opportunity presented, we're going to be probably more like 95, 96% of all the funds that we brought in could go towards that. Is that meaning that there could be more or less homes? It wouldn't be less than the 400, but it could be a lot more. So when you look at the funds of the duration of that, it's about 35,000 is what it will cost for each. But that's, but that's a typical grounds, I mean, that's a typical solar system. So if somebody was to go out and say, "I want solar today," that's what you would typically pay for your home, depending on where you went in the county and looked at that. I mean, depending on the size of the home, because this also includes the way that it has to have battery backup, right? So a lot of the homes that you might see, like in local areas for like Kingman or different areas, they won't actually do a battery pack or have storage of electric, right? They'll take that battery, I mean, they'll take that solar, they'll provide it. And then afterwards, right, they're still on the grid, so they're still taking those opportunities to actually use that other solar. But this particular program will help those that are individuals. If they lose power, they have a backup system, all of them have to have it. And so then, with that being said, they have the power to keep functioning even though the sun isn't out.
So how long is this grant for? And if you don't allocate that money, does that go back after a certain period of time to the grantee?
So Chairman Lincoln Feltzer, Supervisor Bishop, touch on a couple of things here as well. In regards to that, it's a five-year grant. We're looking to do about 100 homes a year. With that being said, and then one of the things that I would also note, kind of looking at this over the course of time, is that the standard electric bill for the course of utilities and things of that nature is about $2,000 per year. If you take that times 500, that's infusing an extra million dollars into the local economy that other people otherwise wouldn't be spending and be going to the electric company. So there's another million dollars that's coming. If the program was in full force and we provided utilities, I mean, provided the electric for 500 people, it'd be over a million dollars infused economic into the community.
Okay, well, I know the Unisource bills are going up. We've had some local hearings and meetings down in Lake Havasu about that. It's going to affect all of our county residents. So I think there would be a lot of interest with people that qualify to apply for solar simply based on the fact they can't pay their utility bills down. So that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould, I'll come back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Smith, most of the solar systems that are currently installed do not have battery backup. If they're grid tied, they will not work without grid power. So that provides them no redundancy. They are starting to make inverters that have battery backup, but I don't know how many people are buying those. If you start installing systems that have batteries, if you use lithium batteries, you're going to double the cost of the system. The lithium batteries have about a 10-year lifespan. If you use lead-acid batteries, which is similar to an automotive battery, the lifespan's about five years. The cost of these batteries is several hundred dollars apiece, and the lithiums is several thousand dollars apiece. Low-income people will not be able to afford to replace their batteries, which means that the taxpayers will have to continue to replace their batteries every five or 10 years. It's just, it's not economically viable. On top of the fact that the federal government now runs a deficit each and every year that is larger than the gross domestic product of the United States. They sell us into debt more than everything that's made across the country, the entire economic activity of the country. The federal government spends that much in excess of the taxes that they take in. That's where this money comes from. They're robbing it from the value of the wallets and the bank accounts across America. They need to stop doing these ridiculous programs. And I don't blame you for bringing it to us because that's your job is to bring stuff to us. But if we vote for this, then we're harming our economy and we're harming everybody's wallet and everybody's bank account. Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Angus.
Yeah, I echo Supervisor Gould in that thank you. This is your job at Community Services, finding these, bringing them to us. But in this case, I have to say thanks, but no thanks. And with that, I'm going to make a motion that we deny the adoption authorizing submission of a grant application to the EPA.
Second. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand where the board's coming from, and I agree with the statements that are being made, but by us turning down a grant of $25 million to help the disadvantaged people or the lower-income people in Mojave County, I don't know how that's going to solve any problems that we have. I personally can't afford solar, so I don't have it. I think this is probably more detrimental to the middle class who doesn't have the money to buy the solar. Or, and now the poorer people are getting free solar, but I think it's a good idea. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'll make a statement as well. All of these solar programs that we hear about, no one asks why we're doing this. Why are we doing this? If you look at CO2, CO2 is only 0.04% of our total atmosphere. And I know that initially, the Biden administration's trying to go for 25,000 megawatts of these renewables by 2025 or 2030. They're trying to get to carbon neutral. But by doing all that and spending all these public dollars, they predict we're only going to go down to point, from 0.04% of the atmosphere to 0.02. So why are we turning our economy on its head and doing all these other things? We're ignoring modern nuclear. If you look at the nuclear power plant that just opened in Georgia, compact, very small, produces energy like a massive solar field would, but they're not looking at that. If you want to spend private funds on your personal residence to put a solar system on your property, then you have that option. But again, like my counterparts here, I don't think that public funds should be used to push this type of stuff. It's private, it should be a private thing that's done with private money. And if you live in a rural area, hopefully you did your calculus and decided, you know, there's going to be some things that are trade-offs when you live in a rural area that aren't going to be as stable if you live in a city. Hopefully, you would invest in a diesel generator for those times that your grid were to go down. I mean, diesel generators will keep your power on for a set period of time if there's a blackout. So I don't approve this program. I don't agree with it. And with that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to deny.
Motion to no.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, hold.
Item number 21, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious what we're doing here.
Supervisor Gould, just answered. This is just the annual renewal of the contract. What they, previously, the contract, we've had this contract for over 20 years for the HealthStar program. This is shifting the contract from a fixed base, which is kind of a lump sum, to a better accounting practice, to the cost reimbursement. So it's per item. So as we move forward, then it's better if we get audited or we can show what each expense went towards on it. So it was just shifting the type of contract, which is a better type of accounting moving forward, and then just the renewal of the program that we have with HealthStar.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I move that item 21 be adopted.
Thank you. You've heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You've heard that motion, second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 25, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm curious, what's the, this apparently requires people that do right-of-way work to hire an engineer. I'm curious what benefit that is to the public.
Good morning, Chairman Lincoln Feltzer, Supervisor Gould, members of the board. This item considers an element of construction pertaining to underground utility construction only. And as it relates to certain activities of late, namely the installation of fiber optic lines throughout an extensive part of Mojave County by fiber optic providers, we've seen either through the micro trenching method or other conventional trenching techniques where the contractors have been quite lax in remediating the open micro trenches or trenches and/or not complying with the county adopted engineering specifications for appropriate backfill. We're approaching the situation as construction inspectors and right-of-way permit administrators, we're approaching this by means of quality assurance, but not quality control. And what we found in many instances, some of which have led to either public complaints or public incidents, that either the timeliness of providing that remediation of the open trench or micro trench is not being adhered to, or again, the inadequacy of the repair, which has caused a considerable amount of, you know, public concern that has filtered up to our office. So many of our franchise and license agreements require the franchisee, the utilities to maintain as-built plans with the county at our request. And so this merely memorializes where their engineer, who designed the technique by which to install the underground utilities, would just circle back and either do a visual check or work with the contractor by some other means to just certify, you know, that the work that is being performed by the contractor is indeed what that engineer ordered.
So, Mr. Chairman, Director Lutowski, there's already an engineer on the project that's designed the project, so what you're asking him to do is make sure that they complete the project the way that he designed it?
Chairman Lincoln Feltzer, Supervisor Gould, correct. So it's just to circle back with the engineer of record to ensure that that line of communication is intact and the engineer of record is satisfied that his or her design is constructed to their design.
And we already require them to have an engineer?
That's correct.
Get the right-of-way permit to begin with?
That's correct. That's standard language in our right-of-way permit process, that engineer plans need to be presented for our approval for construction. So this really links to the approval of construction so that we can release a permit to our satisfaction.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Move that item 25 be adopted.
Thank you. You've heard that motion, second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You guys appear to have it? Do you have it? So ordered. Item number 30, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm reading the backup, and it appears that we're going to hire for $8,500 an engineer for the bathroom remodel at the Lake Havasu Library. And it just seems a little odd that we would use an engineer to replace the fittings in the bathroom, or fixtures, rather. It seems like that money would be better spent someplace else.
Chairman Lincoln Feltzer, Supervisor Gould, I've been told that this is what we would need in order to get an estimate of what it would cost, that we need an architect to be able to do the drawing so that we can go to a contractor and find out how much it's going to cost. This came about, this is something that we were going to do on the next budget cycle, and Supervisor Johnson came to me and asked if there was anything in Lake Havasu that we could do, that we could use ARPA funds for. And this was the project that was kind of first and foremost.
Are we changing the location of the fixtures?
No, but I've been told that in order to get a permit, that we would have to have, and this is what Facilities has told me, that we would have to have an architect to draw it up. And one of the guidelines that the city has is that if we're going to be doing some replacement of stuff, and this has to do mostly with wall piping, and so we've been going off of the advice of Facilities on how to proceed with this.
So they're telling you that Lake Havasu City requires an engineer to draw plans to replace toilets and sinks and piping in the walls?
Piping in the walls, I believe so, sir. That's what Facilities said, that we would need to. Perhaps Director Lutowski could comment more on that, but that's what, talking with the facility supervisor, he said that we would need an architect if we were going to do certain things based on what his research showed.
Thank you, sir. I heard the county manager's microphone squeak, so I'm thinking he wants to weigh in.
Can I ask something?
Mr. Chairman, board members.
Let me get to Supervisor Angus, and then I'll call on you, county manager. Thank you.
I just want to clarify, did you say this is Supervisor Johnson's ARPA project is being paid for?
This is actually going to be paid for from our contingency because I can't even get Supervisor Johnson a number of what it's going to cost without getting an architect to draw it up so that we can then find out how much a contractor would charge us. This is, this is the process that I've been handed by Facilities.
Okay, okay.
Manager Elters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. I'm sorry about the mic. Next time, I will pull it down and then turn it on to avoid that. Mr. Chairman and board members, this is ARPA funding, and the scope of work requires a permit. And the city of Lake Havasu requirement to issue a permit is to know what is being done. So consultant is needed to prepare plans and draw up the, provide the documents so the city can issue a permit. What those plans will also do are, will estimate the cost and will serve as the basis for how much money District 3 will allocate to this project. So it's really more in the way of scope of work, more is being done, this is my understanding. And library is coordinating with our Public Works Department Facilities Division to look at what's needed, the scope of it. This is older plumbing, that some replacement is needed, and a permit is needed. And for the city to issue a permit, they need a set of plans, which, what this will provide. Additionally, ARPA funding is, has strings attached to it. So in order to facilitate this, the original architect that designed the building is being hired, so it's being sole sourced, and that's why the library is paying for it, not ARPA funding, in order to move it forward and get it done. I hope I answered your question, but I'm happy to try again or see if Steve is more effective than I am.
Thank you, Manager Elters. I have a couple of questions to follow up on that for you. So what, if I heard you correctly, there's a design and a construction component to what you're trying to do here. The design component is not applicable for the ARPA portion, which is, I guess, the construction? Is that what you're saying? And that's why we're there using the library contingency fund for the design portion of this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Well, the design is not ineligible, but the fact is, the designer that designed the building and have the original plan for it is being hired to prepare the plans for this work. So it's really advantageous. It's at less cost because they have the original plans. And the sole source, Mr. Chairman, you can do it with contingency fund, but you cannot do it with ARPA funds. So contingency funds from the library, the 8,500, would be used to sole source for the original architect to prepare the plans, and then the construction fund indeed will be ARPA funding from District 3.
Thank you. You sort of touched upon my second question. My second question was, up in District 1, way up in Beaver Dam, we did a project where we used a portion of District 1's ARPA funds to reimburse county staff for a road project that we did. My question is, for this project, can we not reimburse county staff and do this work under, in-house, under force account? In-house with staff?
Mr. Chairman and board members, I believe the extent of the scope of work is beyond what our county forces can do for under plumbing. So that is, it will, it will need to have a contractor come in and do the work. District District 3 is paying for the construction work, but we need, we need a permit from the city to do the work and it needs a contractor. Our county forces are not really equipped to do the work given the scope of it.
Thank you, that's my, any other discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you. County Manager, do you know that if the library was in the county rather than Lake Havasu City, would our building department require an architect to draw plans for a bathroom remodel? Because to me, it just seems a little ridiculous. My daughter-in-law is actually a certified Kohler fixture replacement specialist, I can probably get her to volunteer to do it, but...
Chairman Lincolnfelter, Board Members, the, there's several things involved. One is when you have a commercial structure, any building over 3,000 square feet requires a licensed architect or engineer to design the plans by the Bureau of Technical Registration. So that's one caveat if the building's over 3,000 that is required. In a lot of the smaller TI, tenant improvement type projects, the building official can override that and just require plans from a contractor or a designer to provide the load calculations and flow calculations for that. So in one essence, yes, we would require engineered plans, but, and a licensed contractor does have to do the work.
So I wonder if we've asked Lake Havasu City if they would allow us to, the contractor to drop their own plans for the permit rather than have an architect?
That would be in the direction of the chief building official.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Otherwise I'd be open to a motion. Supervisor Bishop?
Since this is Supervisor Johnson's ARPA project, I wonder if he might want to charm in?
Supervisor Johnson, would you like to add anything to the record?
No, I had the same concerns that all the rest of the board members had, but if that's what Lake Havasu City wants, not much we can do if we're gonna, if we want to fix the library and not use, well, not use the local taxpayers' money, we'll use the ARPA funding. So with that, I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Supervisor. You've heard that motion?
Second.
Heard that motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
You guys appear to have it? Do have it? So ordered. Item number 36, Supervisor Gould.
Gosh, what was that one? So, once again, going over the background, this is to purchase the two new dog catcher trucks, so to speak. We're going to buy new bodies for $42,000 apiece. I'm curious what happened to the bodies that were on the two dog catcher trucks that we're probably going to sell at auction and get money to go into the electric vehicle charging fund thing. Why can we not use those truck bodies even if we have to do some repair and repaint on them?
Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Gould, members of the board, with regard to the chassis mounts, we're under the understanding that these types of mounts are not compatible with the vehicles that are, were in the process of ordering. And to make the necessary revisions to existing would be really too extensive to be able to accommodate any vehicles that are being targeted for order.
Are they the wrong wheelbase?
Generally speaking, it's the dimensional issues. So it could be the wheelbase or some other, I do not add the real specifics in terms of what we have with the vehicles that would ultimately go to auction versus these new vehicles, but it's in all likelihood dimensional.
Because generally, the truck bodies, the last three trucks, I don't know when these bodies were, the bodies that are on there were purchased, but it might be smarter if we could obtain a truck of the correct wheelbase to fit the existing bodies and save ourselves $84,000.
Exactly. And that's what has been a challenge for us in terms of trying to procure vehicles, and this is a good example where we had a cancellation in having to target just vehicles that are only available on the market right now. And I should also point out that the backs of the, you know, these mounts, because of the air conditioning systems, et cetera, that are involved, having a newly functional mount would certainly serve the operation over the longer term in its best interest.
Are the old ones not air-conditioned?
Yes, they are air-conditioned, but it's just a matter of, you know, being able to have a brand-new mount that's completely brand-new and functional over the course of the life of the truck, which is generally five to six years minimum.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Other discussion? It's a pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Heard that motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
As appear to have it, do have it. So ordered. We're going to move into the regular agenda. Per the motion that was made previously, to hear the testimony on items number 12, 37, 38, and 39, I'm going to run it, we're going to go 37, 38, 39, then we're going to circle back to 12, and then we'll go back in that same order to vote on each item individually. So Director Walsh, do you want to come down and address item number 37, please? And then we have a couple people signed up to speak.
Chairman Lincolnfelter, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. Following the previous meeting, we, and per the board's direction, we went back, took a closer look at these abatements and these assessments that we're placing, particularly I'm speaking 37, 38, and 39. Item 12 is a separate type of abatement, that was a zoning abatement. So this, in my comments right now, are directed based on the building abatements for 37, 38, and 39. What we found, and I guess we had a few questions, and if I can, I'll just kind of go through those questions that were raised at the last meeting and share with you what we found. One of the questions, I think that went, that was raised was regarding title reports and whether or not we could do those title reports in-house. With that, I spoke with a number of departments in the county, I spoke with the county recorder, the county assessor, risk management, and I also spoke with the title agency that we're using to perform these title reports. There's a number of reasons for which we go out for these items, just touching on a few of them. The software and expertise that the title companies have, we do not have that software and expertise in-house. The recorder's office, the county recorder's office, is based more on, and is indexed more on the individuals rather than the specific parcels, whereas the title company's expertise and software deals more specifically with the parcel itself. So they're looking, their searches encompass the parcel and that parcel's ownership history. The recorder is tasked, and by all means, if the recorder's here and I get anything wrong, please, please correct me, but the recorder is tasked with recording the documents that are presented to them at face value. And then they index those based primarily on the individuals, but then in some cases, or in most, I think they attempt to index by the property as well, but the key factor is the individual. So whereas a title officer will have that experience and expertise in being able to look at these documents and determine legitimate ownership records and legitimate ownership history, as well as identifying all types of liens and encumbrances that might be on that property. So part of our notifications is, we need to notify any interested parties in, before we perform any abatements. So we want to make sure that we identify anybody that might have an interest in that property. Another issue that was raised was the time and expense. Generally, we'll, we have a, procurement has gone out and has a contract with a title company to perform these limited title reports for us, and you'll see on some of the assessments where it's gone from 100 to 70 to 88. We recently have a new contract, so the previous contract was at $100 for the, for the report. The new contract brought it down to 70, but recently there was an increase up to the 88. So that's where you see the differences in those. But, so right now, we're paying 88 for a title, a title search, and because of their experience and expertise, they're able to perform that title search for that $88. I believe if we were to try and do it in-house, it would take more, it would be more expensive for us to try and do it in-house with the number of searches and verifying those titles and those documents. I think probably the most, the most important aspect though is the liability. These title companies are the, a neutral third party who are qualified experts to go through that process, whereas if we take that on ourselves, we're assuming that liability. And if we miss any of those documents or miss any of those interested parties, I think that creates a level of exposure for the county. By having the professionals do that work for us, it limits our exposure. So that was one of the comments, or one of the questions raised was the title reports. Another question that there was a good amount of discussion on was the inspections and whether or not we were overcharging for inspections. And this one, we, in looking at it, we did find that we have not reduced those inspections for that inspection that comes with a demolition permit. So we did, in going back through and assessing and tallying up how much it costs to do the abatements, we did not discount that. We charged for each one of those inspections. So that is an area that we had an oversight on our part, and we are working with the county attorney's office to go in and correct that on all of the existing assessments that we have out there. We have about 38 current assessments in place right now, so we'll work with the county attorney's office and have an item back to the board to correct that error. Let's see, administrative fees, I think, has been brought up. We've gone through and looked at, you know, gone back through all of our assessments that we've placed to see what's been charged. And as far back as 2010, we've been charging the $50 an hour for an administrative fee. I believe, and I wasn't in this position back in 2010, but I believe the justification, I think at the time, the administrative supervisor for development services was doing a lot of the administrative work for these. It has since been, that workload has since been transferred over to the office specialist. An administrative supervisor fully burdened rate right now is about $50 per hour. An office specialist fully burdened rate is about 32 an hour. So that's all the benefits, retirement, all that good stuff factored in. We recently, as the board knows, probably about, was it about three years ago, three or four years ago? Time's flying. We recently began performing abatements with planning and zoning. Previously, there was some, basically, any zoning violations were taken to court and gone that route. We've recently started doing those abatements and then assessing the properties. And putting that together, that fee was placed at $30 an hour. So we definitely see where we could bring the building administrative fees back to that 30 and align it with the zoning administrative fees as well. Other than that, I believe, I think I've covered most of the issues that were raised, but I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of them.
Thank you. We've got a couple of people that have signed up to speak, then we'll come back to board discussion. Thank you, Director Walsh. Jennifer Esposito?
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito, address previously stated. Mr. Walsh should not address one of the major issues that was brought up is the due process appeal, whether it's to you, whether it's to the advisory board, or whether it is to the Board of Adjustments. I served on the Courtside Planning and Zoning Board. It's always been my understanding that the appeal is to the Board of Adjustments. Originally, we had five Boards of Adjustments. That was downsized, I believe, last year to only one, which makes me think that one of two things happened. Either they weren't, people weren't being told that they had an eligibility to appeal to the Board of Adjustments for a review de novo or for a variance, or they were being told that they were, that there was a fee for that. And last time I checked, the defendant in an action shouldn't really have to pay for their due process of law. It's clearly in the Arizona Constitution, under Article 2, Section 4, under rights, that no property, life, liberty can be taken without due process of law. Due process of law is not from the county to the county. Due process of law is through the court system, which is appealable all the way to a request for writ of sartoriary to the United States Supreme Court, depending on how far the person wishes to take this. So I have very, very serious concerns that the 38 properties that Mr. Walsh just referenced, that none of those people have been given their statutory due process of law. I'm willing to guarantee that not one of those people has been to a court of law or had their case heard by a judge or a jury. Now, when you talk about taking, and there are statutes about when property can be taken, quote, "in the public good," which all has to relate to the code enforcement and whatnot, a partial taking is still a taking. So if you put a lien against someone's property because development services decided to go in and tear something down and then send them the bill, you know, there are things that need to be considered. One of those things that also needs to be considered is that if you enforce that lien and sell that property, there is a Supreme Court case, as I previously mentioned, that says you have to give them the rest of the money in excess of what you billed them for. And I have yet to heard anybody address that the county has set a policy on that. So I'm really concerned about the due process rights of these people, not whether or not their yard was a mess or they didn't follow the thing, that everybody is entitled to their proper due process of law. This came up in a situation with the due process procedure for procurement. As you are aware, earlier this year, you had to update the procedures and policy manual because procurement was not following the statutes, the Arizona revised statutes regarding the due process for appealing payment disputes. So I'm concerned that since the enactment of the International Property Maintenance Code and International Building Code in 2009, that you've potentially been depriving people of their due process rights for years. Thank you.
Chuck DeShazer?
My name is Chuck DeShazer, 8778 Polaris Road, Topoc, Arizona. My biggest problem here is the inconsistencies that we're seeing with this, such as 37, 38, and 39, in particular, you have two title searches, two title searches, and then one title search. I've asked the county attorney's office, where does it say in law that we even have to do a title search and we're charging different amounts for it? Could Mr. Esplin tell me where it says that? Because I've been informed that there's no title search requirement. The other thing is the administrative fees. I spoke earlier about it, but it's never been before this board as far as, you know, where do they come up with $30, $50, any of that to begin with? They're just making it up without getting approval from you guys. On top of everything else, they seem to follow the things that are not written down is whatever they do, and the things that are written down, such as in 11-268, Section G of the Arizona Revised Statutes, it says before they can do any of this, they have to, you know, they can put out the order- can put out the order, this needs to be taken care of. But I've gone through 17 so far of the 35 I've requested, asking, and there's no indication that the State Historical Preservation Office has ever been consulted, even though out in Peach Springs on property 31420-056. I don't know about that one, but it seems to indicate that it was a historical mining something or other that went across two different properties. They only informed one property owner. The person that owns 31420-056 was never informed, but a $16,000 abatement was sent to the person that has 31420-055. So, they don't even follow their own rules. They make up numbers. They, I would ask that this board suspend all kinds of abatements going forward, and on top of everything else, 2020-7 has not been repealed or removed. And so, how do you get around the very law that this board has put in place under Arizona 11-268? I guess if you have any questions for me, I'm more than willing to talk to you about it. Thank you.
All right. Does the board have any questions before we move on to 38? And then, we're going to go to 39, and then 12, and then come back for motions. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm curious, can the, the board lien properties that are cited under the International Property Maintenance Code of 18?
Chairman Ling and Filter, Supervisor Gould, yes, under the Property Maintenance Code, it does allow for the abatement of a structure and then allows for the assessment.
What about the lien?
If I could jump in there, if I may?
Attorney Esplin.
Chairman Ling and Filter, Supervisor, Supervisor Gould, for, under the demolition section of 110, failure to comply, if the owner of a premises fails to comply, I'm going to paraphrase, says the public agency or by contract or arrangement with private persons, and the cost of such demolition and removal shall be charged against the real estate upon which the structure is located and shall be a lien upon the real estate. So, the answer is yes, under the International Property Maintenance Code.
Okay. Thank you.
I had another one, better forget what it was.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item?
Tim, I have just a, just a couple of questions. In some of the comments that we've heard, and I know in some of the other departments, parks, for instance, there's a fee schedule that is approved by the Board of Supervisors that says for these types of things, Mojave County is going to charge this amount. And I haven't been able to find any sort of a fee schedule related to these abatements at all. I've looked. Is there any room to adopt a fee schedule for, you know, maybe you can't do it all, but there should be some sort of a fee schedule for, I mean, at least a couple of these things, in my opinion. What do you think?
Chairman Ling and Filter, we'd be happy to. It was, it was mentioned, so there's a couple of, just a couple of comments along those lines, but no, I believe there's, there's room to do that. Each property is, is different. Each structure is going to cost a certain amount to abate. You know, generally, I think a mobile home that's, that's been dilapidated, that's there, I think we see anywhere from, from $5,000 to $10,000 to abate that. But it really, each, each one is specific. So, we'll get quotes from our contracted contractors on what that cost is and what that total amount is that they, they take to the landfill and do all of that. As far, so, a flat fee to abate a property, I don't think we'd be able to do that, and I don't think that's what, what your intent is. A fee for admin, admin work, absolutely, we could, we could put something in place, we could bring it to the board to, to get approval on that. What we have done is, is generally try to recoup the cost to do that. So, it's not a, to use the term that was used previously, just making up numbers and throwing it out here. We, we have used the fully burdened rates for the people working on those, those jobs. As far as when it came to building, initially, that was done by the Administrative Supervisor whose fully burdened rate is, is around that $50. I believe that's where that came from, and back when, when that first started. Currently, the fully burdened rate of the, of the office specialist is right around 32 an hour. So, we'd be happy to, to bring that to the board and say, any administrative work done on, on these properties with the board's approval would be at $32 an hour. I misspoke earlier, I apologize. Planning and zoning is using, it's $35 an hour for, for the administrative fee for, for planning and zoning abatements.
Thank you.
But, yeah, but no, I'd be happy to, to bring something back to the board for that.
And this other comment or question I have would be applicable for all of these, I'm just going to get it out now, in going through some of these things. And in order to avoid confusion between the county and the property owner, when you do an abatement, I didn't see anywhere that there would be, there was a schedule of items that were going to be removed as a part of that abatement versus items that were maybe on property that should not be removed as a part of an abatement. And then, in a few instances, there were some, some disagreements about the things that were taken as a part of an abatement versus the things that maybe should not have been a part of that abatement. So, is there, is there, does that make sense? Is there, is there a possibility to go out and do an abatement with a schedule of those, those things that the county is going to include in the abatement that everybody could refer back to?
Chairman Ling and Filter, yeah. In, in general, I, I know definitely in, in our zoning abatements, because zoning abatements are more looking at trash and debris and those types of things, we will identify the areas that are of issue, will, will, you know, circle those, show them on a map and present them to them. When it comes to buildings, generally, it's, you know, the, the building's dilapidated, so we're going to take the building, you know, demolish the building, remove that hazard. And generally, in those cases, we'll, we'll pick up the other debris and things that are laying around. If I, if I'd venture to guess, I believe, well, I won't, I won't speculate while I'm up here, but, but definitely, no, we, we can, we can look at the descriptions that we're providing with our notices and definitely ensure that those are.
Yeah, just, just to build on that, your staff's going out, they're doing an inspection. As a part of that inspection, you could go out and you could do an inventory of those things that you're going to basically tell the property owner, hey, if you don't, you know, remedy this, these are the items that we're going to include and take away as a part of an abatement process. We don't really do anything like that. And I think that that sort of creates the opportunity to have a misunderstanding about things that maybe shouldn't have been taken.
Absolutely.
That's all I have. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Walsh, do we have an annual budget for abatements?
We do. Sorry, Chairman Ling and Filter, Supervisor Gould, we do. We budget for abatements each year.
So, how does the money flow from, because you're writing a check? And if, if you were actually to, let's say we actually enforced a lien, where, where would that money go? Does it work its way back into the budget for abatements?
Chairman Ling and Filter, Supervisor Gould, that's, that is correct. So, when, when we have had liens be, be paid back, that funds, those funds have gone back into the, the abatement fund.
What's our batting average on getting paid back?
We're not making it to the major leagues, I'll tell you that much.
So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, we're going to go to item number 38. We have.
Chairman, if I might.
Sorry, Tim, go ahead.
If I might just address some of the comments, and I apologize, Ms. Esposito did bring up a good part about, a good point about the due process, and I failed to mention that in my comments. All of the cases that we, we act on, we do include the ability for them to appeal that. So, there is a notice within, within that, that notification that they're in violation, we give them the notice, the ability to appeal that, that violation, both the ability to appeal the violation and the need for abatement, as well as the, the ability to appeal the assessment. And that's really what these, placing these assessments today allows for the property owners to, to appeal those assessments. We have not heard from, from items 37, 38, and 39. Those property owners have not appealed this assessment to, to the, to the department.
Thank you. We're going to move to hear testimony on item number 38. I would ask the speaker that signed up, rather than generalized comments, which I hopefully, hopefully you've gotten out, that you keep your comments directly, directed to item number 38. Mr. DeShazer.
Chuck DeShazer again, 8778 Polaris Road, Topoc, Arizona. It's just the inconsistencies of even 37, 38, and 39. You have seven inspections on 37, five inspections on 38, three inspections on 39. There is no procedure being followed here. Like I say, abatements that I've looked into, there, there's one that has a 2.5 hours.
Sir, if I could interrupt, do you have anything that's specific to item number 38, this particular abatement?
Uh, 38, I'm just saying that it needs to be looked into because I have looked at the notice and order. It has not followed 2020-7. They gave 35 days to abate the property. They gave an appeal to the Board, Building Code Advisory Board. Nowhere in 2020-7, which is the law that you guys need to follow, and the, they, they keep saying that they're going to get with the County Attorney and work this out sometime, who knows, in December, and it needs to be stopped at this point right here until they figure out exactly what needs to be done, rather than continuing to put liens on properties that are, you know, like I say, some are being charged for, for seven inspections, some for five, some for three. There is no going forward. There's timeframes being not adhered to for the title searches on these. Why is there a second title search on number 38 when the notice should have been within the 30-day period, and they should have gone out there and abated it immediately? So, there should not be a need for, you know, we don't have a recent title search. You know, there's some abatements that they're sending out second and third notice and orders to because, oh, we haven't sent them a notice and order in eight months. Well, their timeframe is all screwed up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the only person we had signed up to speak on item number 38. Any board discussion on item number 38? Hearing none. We're going to move to item number 39. Again, the motion was to hear the testimony for each one of these specific items before we were to, to vote on those. I'd ask that the public speaker on number 39 come with comments specific to number 39. Mr. DeShazer.
Yes, again, Charles DeShazer, 8778 Polaris Road, Topoc, Arizona. We're looking at another inconsistency, specifically 39 only has one title search. Why is that? Were they a friend of the Development Services or something? And even though theirs took, you know, the same amount of time as everybody else, they got one title search as compared to two, or three, or five, depending on, you know, which abatements may go back and look at. It, it's just the inconsistency, not following the law, and the not bringing the administrative fees in front of the Board of Supervisors, and just between 39, which has, I don't recall what the number of administrative hours used on 39, but we're going to be discussing 12, and it's got a $70 administrative fee. I'm sure 39 has like several hundred dollars worth of administrative fees, and they're both using the same 2020-7. Thank you.
That's the only speaker we had on item number 39. Any discussion by the board before we move to public comment on item number 12? Hearing none. We're going to go back to public comment on item number 12. We have one speaker, Jennifer Esposito. Again, if it could focus your comments on item number 12. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito. Again, I just wanted to say that I don't question whether or not they, the property owner in this case was offered some due process. I'm only asking that the board determine that they were offered the proper due process because if, if there's issues where your choice is to get a variance or, or to determine whether or not the codes are being properly applied, that's something that is specifically tasked to the Board of Adjustments. And so, you know, Mr. Walsh should not, again, did not address whether or not the state law is in conflict with the International Building Code due process provided, or the International Property Maintenance Code due process. So, I'm just questioning whether or not this particular property owner was given the correct due process because if you're not offered the right option, you're, you may not take it. So, I think that the board just needs to, to have a legal review of whether or not the international codes override the state statutes. If there's a conflict, clearly, the state statute would, would hold. So, just curious whether or not this particular property owner was, if they were offered the property process that the state statute allows for. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Attorney Esplin, we've heard testimony on several of these items. Would you care to opine to the board as far as the due process concerns that we've heard this morning?
So, thank you, Chairman Ling and Filter, and members of the board. I think it's important to understand that there are two different, two different provisions or two different paths, so to speak, that, that are going on here. The first one is under 11-268, and then, under 11-268, it allows for abatements for trash, debris, dilapidated buildings, and so on. And specifically in 11-268, it says that the Board of Supervisors have to pass an ordinance in order to do that. That's what the board has done in 2020-07. So, you've got 11-268 and 2020-07, those work together. The second one is under 11-861, and under 11-861, it specifically says, again, the Board of Supervisors can pass an ordinance related to, for building code enforcement. And, and that one specifically, it says, the board, if the board wants to do that, they have to pass an ordinance, and it's got to be a recognized code. So, according to 11-861, in any county that has adopted zoning, which we have, the Board of Supervisors may adopt and enforce in the unincorporated areas of the county, a building code or other related codes to regulate the quality, type, and material and workmanship. And then, later on, in the same, in, in 11-861, it says the types of codes that they have to, that they can adopt. And so, you can't just get any code, it's got to be a specific type of one. The one that this board has chosen is the International Property Maintenance Code. So, you have two different, two different things going on here. Item 12 is addressing 11-861 and 2020-07. Items 37, 38, and 39 are addressing 11-861 along with 2021-03. So, you have two different things here. So, addressing verse, addressing item 12, first off, we do have an appeal procedure. The appeal procedure is in 2020-03, oh, excuse me, 2020-07, and that appeal is to the board here. That's the due process that is afforded to that, to that individual. We will note that under, that the person in, in item 12 has not appealed that. They've not done that. So, that, they've waived that ability to argue that this is due process or not because they didn't come in and make that argument. If you go to the other three, the items 37, 38, 39, again, we've adopted the International Property Maintenance Code, and under the International Property Maintenance Code, it specifically allows for an appeal process. So, this is the due process that the board has provided, and it's laid out in section, section 111. This is the appeal process. And then, I'll also note, under 111.7, there's a provision here for court review. Any person, whether or not a previous party of the appeal, should have the right to appeal to the appropriate court, the decisions of the appeal board. So, there's your due process there under 11-831, excuse me, 11-861 and 2021-03, which allows for an appeal to, to Board, Board of Appeals. In this case, it's the Board of Building Code Advisory Code Board. And then, if somebody was aggrieved by that, they could appeal the decision to the Court of Appeals, excuse me, to the, to the court, to the Superior Court, under 111.7. So, there's your due process. So, there's due process provision. So there's due process provisions in place. To address some of the things, I appreciate what Mr. DeShazer has said, and I can see why people would be confused about the two tracks. And so that's why we are reviewing them. And we're going as quickly as we can, but it just takes time, and we're trying to get it done. We've set it, we've set a deadline for this Friday for our office to have everything reviewed, ready to go, and, and so that we can get the process going, because then it has to go in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's going to go, go for this board to be approved. So this Friday is our deadline to have our in-house ordinances reviewed and done. I've reviewed 202007, and, and that one, we've sent it over to Development Services. They reviewed it, so that one's about ready to, ready to get going in the process. 202103, our staff, our staff attorney has already reviewed it and made edits. I'm just doing my final review so that I can, I can say, okay, this looks good. And then we'll consult with Development Services to make sure it's good. And again, our goal is to get that done by this Friday. If we get those two done by this Friday, then we'll, then we will submit it to the proper agencies to go through the process that it can come back to the board. And what I'm, when I'm reviewing those, I'm addressing some of the things that Mr. DeShazer and, and Ms. Esposito have raised, just to make it even more clear and say, okay, we want to make sure that this is doing this way. And so hopefully, it'll, it'll be something that the board will look at and say, okay, we'll go ahead and do that and make sure. If not, the board can make any adjustments that they wish to. But as to these, 37, 38, 39, I, I believe that they follow the, the ordinance, and there's been due process afforded to the persons. They have waived it by not appealing it. So therefore, our recommendation, the county attorney's recommendation, is to approve 37, 38, and 39. As to 12, again, we also, the county attorney's office recommends approval, given that the 11268 and 202007 provisions were followed, and that person also has not appealed those decisions either. They've waived that appeal as well. So it'd be the county attorney's office to, to approve those assessments.
Thank you, Attorney Esflyn. We're going to go back now to item number 37, and I would open up to the board. What's the pleasure of the board? Supervisor Gould.
I have one more question. Director Walsh, is there a copy of the International Building Code and the International Property Code in Development Services that the public can actually access and use?
Chairman, Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gould, yes, we have a number of copies of both, both codes, and we will make them available to the public.
So if somebody wants to come take a look at that, since they're being policed under that, they should have the right to look at it without actually having to buy their own copy of it?
Yes, and Chairman, Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gould, along those same lines, there are copies available at each of the county libraries. I believe there's a copy in the, in the clerk's office, and, and they are online as, as well.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Lingefelter, if I, if I may, before the, the board makes a motion or decides, with these items, items 37, 38, and 39, if I may request that the board, if the board does desire to place those assessments, that they reduce that amount by $65 due to the, the missed inspection, along with the, the demolition permit.
Okay. Thank you, Director Walsh. What's the pleasure of the board on item number 37? Supervisor Gould.
I move that item 37 be adopted with the $65 reduction.
Thank you for that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
For that motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Item number 38, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 38 be adopted with the $65 reduction to fees.
Thank you. You've heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Item number 39, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I move that item 39 be adopted with the $65 reduction in fees.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Item number 40.
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me. Yes, thank you for the correction. Item number 12, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I move that item 12 be adopted, and I do not think the $65 fee applies to that. So the fee stands.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard that motion and second. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You guys appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Now we'll move to item number 40. We actually have three people that have signed up to speak. We'll call them up first. Mr. Armin Stange?
Armin Stange, 4321 South Calvary Road in Fort Mojave. So we have this problem going on since 2011, 2012, but the problem started about 20 years ago. We had neighbors, they moved away, like the Putites. They were living next to the Messner property, and he was crushing cars then already. And we had elderly people move away because they were afraid of speaking up, and they were afraid of retaliation. Now, I'm not afraid of retaliation. I can take care of myself real good. And you see the paper here? So, I mean, he's threatening me already with court and everything, and he sent me the note, the text messages in 2020. So before that, 2018, 2019, Supervisor Gould and I and Ian Fay looked at his property, and he told us he's going to clean it up. Nothing happened till 2020, and then he said, some of the text messages, that he's going to clean up the property and has a property management company take care of his property. Haven't seen that yet happen, and that is five years ago. So just abate the property, get the neighborhood cleaned up. That sets a precedence to all the junkyards in the neighborhood. This way, they get the message, we're not playing games anymore. Thank you.
Mr. Messner?
No, the next one's speaking.
Very nice, sir. I live at 4359 South Calvary Road. About, I don't know how long ago it was, we got, we had a, I think it was a mine zone lot, open lot and storage. And I've been watching the, the board's meetings and whatnot. And the last time Mr. Stange brought in a paper, I was looking at it from a satellite view. This time, I've got a trouble with rubbish, debris, trash, and filth, which all pertains to the health of the public. I don't understand, where is the health of the public being? Where are they getting hurt at? Where is there a risk for anybody getting hurt on this side? I'm not tearing up cars, and I go doing that. I did start doing that when the economy went bad. We were, it was really hard on us. And I was pulling in vehicles and, you know, the price of scrap metal went down to 18 bucks a ton, so I figured, a couple years before that, it was up to 200 bucks a ton, so I could make some money doing that. Not doing that anymore. I'm not bringing stuff in. I'm trying to get the stuff cleaned out. We pulled almost 50 ton off that property in the last while. It's not where it needs to go, I understand that. But it's a heck of a lot better than it has been. It's getting better now. We went through, we went through this before. 20-some years ago, we were called in when Tom Sockwell was on the board, and got all finalized. We put $17,000 in privacy fencing up. Because it doesn't say, he said, if you have more than 400 square foot, you put it towards the rear of the route with a privacy fencing. Okay, I just went through this with Tom, and I thought it was going through with Jess Baker. And we put more fencing up so you can't see it. You can't see him behind there. And I'm getting it cleaned up. We pulled another, three loads of stuff out of there this last week. The first time that I met Mr. Stange, me and my girlfriend was pulled down the road, and he had a washing machine, a clothes washer sitting outside, instead of free on it. So I stopped him, threw it on the back of the truck, I was going to take it and scrap it. It was money, and we were hungry. And he come out there, you know, that, that thing's free, but it's a good, it works, it works really good. But don't take it down here to this guy, he's a drug demon, no good so-and-so. I sat for 10 minutes and listened to this man tell me how big a prick I was. And then no uncertain words. I sat and listened to him tell me how bad I was, and what I was doing wrong, and everything else. How I was doing this to the community and everything else. We've had people turned away from yard sales because he doesn't want them driving down the lane. And it goes on and on and on.
Thank you for speaking today, sir. I appreciate it. Mr. Devin Cantorano?
Devin Cantorano from Fort Mojave. I'm in the neighborhood there with Stange and Messner. I get to look at his property every day, because my property is behind his property, which I'm sure he's well aware of. It's, it's an eyesore, and it has been for many years, well before I got to the neighborhood. I'm just here to ensure that it gets shored up and we get this place cleaned up, whether he does it himself or the county does it. I watched the meeting last time, and you guys gave him a certain amount of time. But you guys have given him many amounts of time, from what I understand and the, what I've researched. So I'm here today to speak on behalf of this matter and say that you guys need to follow through with what you plan. Thank you.
That's the last individual that we had signed up to speak today. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Lingefelter, if I may, just make one item.
Attorney Esflyn, go ahead.
So this is an appeal of the, of the decision that was made for the notice to abate. Did you want to hear from Development Services? And if you do, then I would recommend you just give an opportunity to Mr., Mr. Messner to have an opportunity to respond if he wishes.
I think I'll call up Tim or your staff first, and then we'll give the gentleman an opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. August 14th, we brought to the board this, these properties as requested by the board, and demonstrated the process that we have been going through for the past several years. Just to briefly go through the, the history, it started in 2016 with a complaint that we received, and that complaint was brought into compliance by the property owner in 2016, and the case was closed. The second complaint received was in 2017. This one went through several years through the court process, and ultimately closed noncompliant due to the adjudication that it went through. The third complaint received in 2019. Through that process, the property owner, Mr. Messner, was found guilty and sent to jail for 30 days. He had 12 months probation and compliance meetings for six months with our staff. He met the stipulations of that court proceedings, and the case was closed. Brings us to our, our final complaint and case that we've opened in April of 2013. That's where we are now. The previous complaints, we did not have the abatement process. We do now have the, the abatement process. And in 2000, or August of, August 14th, we presented to the board this history, and the board decided that we wanted to give an additional 30 days notice to the property owner to clean up or we're going to abate. With that, we sent our abatement notification, and through that process, it is, they do have the opportunity to appeal through the 202007 ordinance, and Mr. Messner has appealed and has brought, and because of that, it's on this gen item today. We did have some recent photos taken. I believe we can bring those up real quick. These, this is from the August 15th timeframe. There's three properties in total. Each property has several, several tons of junk and debris. The, we also had our code enforcement team go out this morning just to verify whether or not improvements have been made. The, Mr. Messner was claiming that he would have it done in an additional two weeks, and we, and since the time that he applied for that variance, this was, this photo was back in July, in August, and then we do have some, a lot of, a lot of what you're seeing here is unchanged. We weren't, when we went out this morning, we weren't able to go directly onto his property, but we were taking photographs from the right of way. And to kind of speed things up, we'll just get to the, the photos that we took this morning. This is kind of the entrance into the property. From our standpoint, from our inspections, the, the property is still deeply in, in violation and is in need of that code enforcement or the abatement. I believe that's the last photo that we have there.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Messner, you want to come up and have your opportunity to speak on this?
Very nice, sir. 4359 Calvary Road. A lot of these pictures right here, that's, that's taken from Sylvia's property. A lot of the stuff was taken not from the road where it's supposed to be inspected from. A lot of stuff, like that dump truck and stuff there, I just got that, brought that home. Couple of the pictures you've got in there, you can't see that it's full of stuff ready to go to the dump now, with a trailer behind it. I've got five trailers on it sitting there that you pictured, looks like it's junk and whatnot, but it's not. It's ready to go to the dump right now. If you drive there right now, right this hour, you'll see all of them sitting there, ready to go. So it doesn't look like a lot of this. One of the excuses, when I put that fence up, Tom told me it was, it was okay. As long as it was behind that fence, we were okay. Now you're telling me it's not okay. There's no risk to the public here. I know it needs cleaned up, and I'm still working on it. Okay? The time when I did the jail time, my mom lived with me for the last seven years of her life because she had Alzheimer's dementia. I knew I had to do the jail time because we had her listed as it on the property. I wasn't even in, in the state at that point, right before that. And I wasn't going to leave my mom, so I walked out of courtroom. That's what I got the 10 days for. It wasn't because of the zoning violation, because I wasn't going to go to jail, because I was the only one taking care of my mom. Alzheimer's and dementia is, is a evil thing. But the last seven years of her life, she lived with me. The last two years of her life, I changed her diaper. But, you know, these, the pictures I'm looking at right here, it doesn't even look like that now. I went to Vegas trying to get, I had an endorsement. They took the backhoe away from me in 17. I couldn't get it back. Big thing, we had a big conflict. Mr. Stange was a big owner of that problem. We got raided for having a chop shop, dismissed because it was lack of evidence. They took my backhoe. And if you really dig into these pictures and look at a lot of the stuff there, it was brought in with, with something heavy. Without that backhoe, it's hard to get that stuff moved. That's what we made a living on. The county took my living, my mom's living. We lived on her little social security check. The whole time she was on Alzheimer's, and what side work I could give because I couldn't be gone all the time. Anybody that's ever had Alzheimer's patient, dementia patient, they know what I'm talking about. It's a full-time thing. The COVID thing, I got the COVID thing. It wasn't easy coming back from that. I've got, I've got no excuses why it isn't. It's getting better, is all I can say. It's taken a while, but every one of those ones, he said that I was not complying. I was complying. The 10 days that I spent in jail was because of my mother. I wasn't going to leave her. I walked out of the courtroom, plan simple. And after she passed, I went back in and took. And after she passed, I went back in and took care of that charge with Mr. Moss. Told him I'm sorry, but that's the way it was and he said, well, I understand, 10 days. It was, always had to make its time. And I'm asking it. And I've asked for a little more time. If you look into it a little bit more, I guess, we just got done putting another $4,000 or $5,000 out for the fencing that the inspector said it to do. And a lot of these shots are taken from inside the property, you just look at it from the street, that's what the revised statute says. You put it towards the back of the lot, that's why all that metal, the metal siding or that stuff is up there for the fence. I was told to put that in. Because from the fence, from the road, you can't see it. Right there in this picture, you can't see any of the debris back there, but there's no trash and no filth. It's not a public nuisance. Mr. Stange may not like, look at it. When we got raided in 17, one of the officers told us that he's got more formal complaints in the second place to the last place, all combined. And they're all about me. And there, some of them are valid, some of them are just off the wall.
Sir, if I could stop you there, you've appealed this notice to abate. On what grounds would this board grant your appeal to, to prevent this? Because we've seen pictures, we've heard from two of your neighbors, it seems to me that this has gone on for many, many years. Your property is not zoned to be allowed to get into the state in the condition which it's in. If the county goes out and abates this, I guess my direct questions to you would be, why is, why are you allowing your property to, to get into this condition? And if the, if the county goes out and abates this, can we get your word that you're not going to allow it to get back to this state?
Yeah.
I don't understand what's going on.
When I told you that I took off 50 ton of metal out there, all that, the metal fencing you see there towards the back of the lot on 4359, I had heaps of metal up there. I mean, I was struggling, we were struggling hard and, you know, we were doing 2.3 through the company. And when the 07 problem hit, we only declared 196,000 on taxes the next year. We were averaging six septic tanks a week. We did six septic tanks the whole month of June. The whole county had that many, the whole month of June. And we did two of them. So we were getting our fair share, it just wasn't enough fair share to go around. We didn't declare bankruptcy, we didn't do that, we didn't do, I wasn't doing all this nonsense. I was trying to do it, I would say legal, but I guess now, I know it wasn't legal. I was bringing in scrap metal, people were bringing scrap metal and nobody was getting paid for it. I'd bring them in, trade them some stuff out of there and thinking it was going to go up. Made a bad decision. That's what I'm cleaning up the mess from then.
Any other board members have any comments? Otherwise I'd open it up to what the pleasure of the board is on this.
One thing that I can say is that everything that the inspectors asked me to do, I've tried to get it done.
All right, thank you, sir. I'd open it up to the board.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gould, I move that the request for appeal be denied.
Second.
Read that motion and second, any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 41. Director Smith, this is the discussion of possible action, acknowledge receipt of the Mojave County Housing Needs Assessment and give feedback to staff and direct staff to bring back a final draft to the board at a future board meeting or final, for final approval. I'm going to let you intro with a comment and then we have a couple of people that have signed up to speak and we'll get into board discussion. Go ahead.
Excellent. Good afternoon, Chairman Lincolnfelter, Board of Supervisors. Just want to give a recap and then after that, a public comment and I'll turn it over to FCS. So, the Board of Supervisors asked us to do a housing study. We did that housing study. But first I'd like to recognize my team and the group that was on that committee and really worked to make this happen. First being Tammy Ursenbach, Economic Development. I also had Scott Holtry from Development Services, Barbara Spoonhauer from Administration, myself, and we also had Stephen Engel from our GIS team that worked on this housing study to pull it together. We did a press release a couple of weeks back as well and, and was well received, three, three positive comments that came in via email. And I would also add that we had over 800 plus people through the county survey when it was on the housing, when it was on the county website, over 800 people responded. So it's been a great opportunity, great details have come of it. I know there's a lot of people in the county that are interested in seeing it. With that, I will conclude until public comment.
All right, thank you. Christopher Darte? Tanya Dowson, you're on deck.
Christopher Darty, Mojave County taxpayer. I'm opposed to item 41. Here we go again, beginning in June of 2022, this nagging infringement, it just won't go away. And yesterday, due to the Constitution Day, I decided to reread that sacred document and I was looking for a language similar to what is found in the 57 pages of executive summary attached to this and curiously, I came up short. For example, where in the Constitution does it say all citizens deserve to have a decent home? That's the first sentence in the executive summary. And there are affordable housing advocates considered patriots bent on adhering to constitutional law. Where in the Constitution does it say we are to study and segregate citizens according to race, ethnicity, poverty statistics, income levels, or anything else? And why is our Mojave County assessor a stakeholder advisory committee member in this project? Per the county website, it says, quote, "The responsibility of the Mojave County Assessor's office is to locate, identify, and set full cash value on all taxable county property in accordance with Arizona revised statutes and to review their, that value in the appeal process," end quote. How does this translate into stakeholder status? I'm not accusing anyone of anything, just asking, I'm just curious. Too many county staff are involved in this process, in my opinion. But again, it begs the question, why? Why is Mojave County spending tax dollars to take property from one group and award it to another? To pay some outside consultant for a housing needs assessment? To entice property owners with tax credits? To jump on board the entitlement wagon? To further erode our God-given constitutional rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness? Continuing on this diversity, equity, and inclusion path is a dangerous route to destruction. Let the free housing market decide. Lower the tax burden, leaving, leave serving the needs of the poor to private and religious-based charities. Put an end to this process now and just say no to this item. Thank you.
Tanya Dowson.
Good morning, Tanya Dowson, Mojave County taxpayer. The FCS Group Executive Summary starts out with the wacky claim that all citizens deserve to have a decent home. Then later, the summary talks about ways to ensure that all housing needs are met. While this may sound warm and fuzzy to those who don't stop and think about it very hard, is planting the seed in people's minds that housing is a right. Convincing Americans that housing is a right is a cornerstone to social engineering and expanding centralized government's reach. Housing is a product of somebody's time, energy, and talent. To quote Jet Graphics, "One person's need does not create a claim on another person's life." We all have a responsibility to figure out how to provide for our own housing needs. It's definitely not the government's job to provide housing. From what I understand, this project is based on tax credits for developers. I'm all for tax credits, but in this case, the government is interfering with the free market by showing favoritism and picking winners and losers. And there will be unintended consequences guaranteed. According to the United Nations document, Housing 2030, I'm going to put a visual up here. Addressing housing affordability is central to achieving the United Nations Sustainable Development Goal Number One on Poverty Eradication and Goal Number 11 on Inclusive, Safe, Resilient, and Sustainable Cities and Human Settlements. In this document, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development is credited with implementing the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals through its housing needs assessments involving multi-stakeholders, its data collection, its housing rehab, its housing voucher programs, weatherization, and location-efficient communities that are affordable and diverse. The UN's Housing 2030 document recommends using regulatory funding and financing tools to invest in a range of housing delivery models on a needs-based allocation. Or to put it another way, from each according to his ability to each according to his needs. Does this sound familiar? It should. It sure sounds like Mojave County is doing its part to implement the United Nations agenda.
That's the last person we have signed up to speak. I'd open it up to the board. Supervisor Angus.
Hi there. I believe, and I think my memory serves me, that two of us on the board didn't vote to put, to even put this forward in the, in the beginning. And I think that was me and for all the reasons and that we go back to when we were talking about the $25 million grant, I think it's all for a reason that, that we don't really need to be with and so for that, that is why I'll be voting no.
Other comments or discussion from the board? Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't believe that this, what we're voting on is accepting that they dropped off the report. I don't believe that we're implementing a plan, is that correct?
As the agenda item reads, it's to acknowledge receipt of the Mojave County Housing Needs Assessment and give feedback to staff and direct staff to bring back a final draft to the board at a future board meeting for final approval.
Chairman Lincolnfelter?
Supervisor Angus.
Just for clarification, so I didn't, I didn't vote to put it forward, so, you know, I'm not going to vote to bring back a final draft.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
And it was, I was just clarifying that this, this, there's no project here. I'm not interested in going forward because I wasn't interested in moving forward in the first place. I can find this stuff myself, I could do a Google search and come up with most of the things that are here. We know we have a housing problem. The board has stated that it's not interested in putting tax dollars in to do anything about this program or the problem that, really, we have nothing to do with housing affordability except our building department. Raising the standards for housing has an effect on the cost of housing. But the whole thing, this is, it's pointless because we're not, I'm not going to vote to use taxpayer dollars to buy down people's housing prices. It's a free market, it needs a free market solution, not a government solution. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
County Manager Elders.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Just to refresh the board's mind, a decision was made by the board in the past to award this contract to pursue a housing needs study in Mojave County. The study is substantially complete. The intent of today's board action was truly to just present it to the board for feedback, for questions, and if the answers to the questions triggered additional direction or a mandate to add something or to cover something further with the intent then. And if, if none results from the presentation to the board, then staff would go back, finalize the study, and bring it back to the board at a future board meeting for adoption. That's the intent.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
What would there be to adopt? Is this a plan or is this just a study? If it's a study, we're not adopting anything, we're accepting that they've dropped off the report. We're not adopting anything that's inside the report, but maybe I could be wrong.
Well, it probably would be a good idea for the board to just give the consultant a little time to present the study and the components of it at some level, just so the board knows what's inside of it. So when it's finalized, at least you will know what, what is contained in it. But the idea was that this study would be then become a reference for any project, Lytec or otherwise, to validate the need and to use it as the basis for whether it's financing or, or, you know, a banking application or however it may be used. But the last time we had a housing needs study in Mojave County has been well over a decade and this was seen by the board as a need to go forward. Those were the basis on which the contract for the study was awarded. So I, if the board would indulge staff to go through the presentation, I think it would be really valuable to do so, Mr. Chairman and board members.
So this is going to be used as a guide to development? Because I don't believe that was how it was presented.
Director Smith, you want to answer that question?
Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Gould, members of the board, community members, it's my pleasure to present what we've come up with. In regards to your question, Supervisor Gould, is this going to be the, the development tool that, that changes Mojave County? No, sir, it's not. But what this will do is it will allow developers and people that are going to go out and finance to a bank, an understanding of what the need in Mojave County is done by a third-party organization, documented, and provide that information as well as they move forward. There is good information in this study. I, I can say I've reviewed the study. It was very helpful. It is helpful for the communities that are in the northern part of our, our county as well, where their information was not accurately represented in the census. We had conversations with those, we had conversations with all of the city managers as well, positive interactions. With that being said, I would humbly ask that you have an opportunity to see the presentation today from FCS Group and, and evaluate the data on the merits of what's put forward and, and we could have any frank discussions we want. But in regards to it being a development tool, is it going to change Mojave County? No, it's going to take the people in Mojave County to change Mojave County and it's going to take that leadership within the development programs and people within the county, the developers, the builders, the countless people that we had conversations with, the Engel Homes, the other developers that are within the county. It's going to take all of them. So with that, sir, that would, I hope that answers your question.
Supervisor Bishop, did you have comments?
Yes, I, I did have a question. Director Smith, did the cities also do an assessment similar to this?
Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Bishop, the only city within the county that actually did a study is with Lake, be Lake Havasu. They found similar findings as to what we found, but in addition, it, it really highlights the different parts of the county that could be developed and, and really to put forth opportunities for the county to look at in regards to, could be infrastructure, could be other things that would be needed within the county, so that the county's aware of the different things where there is opportunities for building or as you were doing a master, not a master plan, but as you're looking at where the county should develop, where the resources should be allocated in regards to transportation or other things. It's just giving you the basic information and, and the outline as well.
So this is just a tool in the toolbox that more than likely our incorporated cities will also refer to in the years to come. So I would like to, to see what you put together so far as a draft.
Chairman Steve. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce Todd Chase from FCS Group to walk us through the presentation. Todd?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here, Chair and Supervisors. I appreciate this. This is towards the end of the process of this study, but it's still a draft. And so if there's anything in here that makes staff uncomfortable or supervisors uncomfortable or the public uncomfortable, you know, let Michael know, Director Smith know, and we will make sure we address that. Again, my name is Todd Chase, I'm a economist, part-owner with FCS Group, and we have a presentation here, I think it should just forward through. There we go. Yeah, I've been involved in real estate development either for developers or for engineers or architects or for my current company, FCS Group, for over 39 years now. My father was a builder, small builder, and, and I've spent the last 30 years working mostly out of a out of our offices in Oregon, Washington, and Colorado, doing these types of projects as well as helping cities and counties finance and figure out how to pay for infrastructure to serve development. And this project had some key objectives focused on understanding the need throughout Mojave County. And it's, as you know, a huge county, and it's been growing quickly. So we're going to talk about that growth and what it means going forward. We'll share some of the findings. We had significant levels of community and stakeholder input during this project. It's also interesting to see that through these types of studies when you have 900 community members volunteer to participate. You want to hear what they have to say. And we have conducted a buildable land inventory throughout the county as well to look at vacant lands that are unconstrained for future development. And we have that information now in kind of a interactive mapping tool that really anybody can use now. So the overall goal of this project was to help focus community efforts on critical local housing issues. As I mentioned, or was it, was it mentioned? These types of reports really are just studies. They're not changing policies. Developers can use them when they go to the banks. Property owners can use them to think about subdividing their property someday. Staff can use them to apply for grants. If you want to do a community development block grant, for example, to convert septic tanks to, to public sewer, those monies can be made available. And by just having a plan like this that you can refer to can put you kind of, give you additional scores to help tip the balance in your favor over another community that may not have a, a, a strategy or a plan that's been adopted. So we've identified the housing needs. We've looked out two years in northern La Paz County as well as Mojave County. We've obtained lots of input from housing producers, developers, lenders, as well as housing consumers, residents primarily. And we've created this interactive mapping tool with the help of Stephen Engel and county staff that basically uses public information and has organized it in a way where you can navigate now throughout the county and identify tax lives that are considered to be vacant and buildable and potentially serviceable. So that could, you know, one of the problems we've noted in this project is the county's been successful in approving building permits throughout the county and the cities. You've been adding about 1,600 per year over the last 13 years of new residential permits. But the demand has been closer to 2,000. And it's projected to even be higher than that going forward. So you haven't been able to keep up with the man through production, through normal market measures. And that's typical. We see that many places we work in. As a result, prices tend to outpace income levels, and that's what we're experiencing now. Again, good staff involvement as a steering committee. We've had committee members from the community college, the cities, developers, tribe, lots of participation from a broad perspective there. We've also reached out to a number of contractors and developer types or builders, lenders during the project. We've interviewed these folks. We received online surveys from 845 residents and 16 of the developer builder types to help identify what they thought were the most critical housing issues. And like you mentioned, there's probably no real surprise if you've been living here for 10 years in what you might find in this study, but there might be some new information in there. We found that at least since the pandemic, the state has been one of the fastest growing states in the country. A 1.7% annual growth rate for population. Mojave County is growing even faster than the statewide average at 2.1%. A lot of these growth forecasts predict the growth to be slower, about 1.5, 1.6% going forward. But even with that slower growth, you're still, we're still projecting through the state's Commerce Department to add about 75,000 additional residents by 2045. Those residents are going to require about 50,000 homes if you want to address their demand, plus the other demand from, from part-time residents. Poverty rates are higher in Mojave County than the state as a whole. Currently, about one in four children here are living in a poverty household, which typically is income levels below 25,000 for a family of three, or below 20,000 per year for a family of two. So that is a concern. There's not much the county can do. You're not going to build the houses for all these people. All you can do is make information available so maybe the production of housing can increase. The severe rent burdens with people paying over half of their income on rent, though, is lower in Mojave County at 17% of renters compared to the state as a whole, 21%. Because land is relatively cheaper, incomes are also cheaper. But as, as a result, you have some different dynamics going on there with, with affordability, especially through the survey. People really identified a lack of rentals, long-term rentals. We found that, as Michael mentioned briefly, about 80% of, or about half the demand will be from people earning 80% of less of the median income going forward. That's the case now. So that means a family with an income of, say, 50,000 or below. And they certainly can't afford to buy a house at a $50,000 a year income. So they will be more or less required to rent if you want them to work here. Currently, the vacancy rate is very tight, about 1% last time we checked. And about one in five homes here are second homes or seasonal housing. That's also driving up demand, no surprise there. There are though about 12 major subdivisions with over 1,000 units being planned that are being tracked by Mojave County planners. And you also have about 12 large businesses that are looking to locate or expand here, looking to add between 4,000 and 5,000 workers over the next five or so years. And so those workers are going to also need housing at some point. So we recognize the buyer demand remains strong. The actual recorded home sales per month in the four cities, not including the unincorporated areas of the county, averaged about 530 per month over the last few years. So significant levels of demand. We know it's strong. And like I said, this document can become due diligence for a lender or for a developer or a property owner looking to subdivide. Housing costs have been increasing much faster than income. We see that throughout the U S. The range in home prices for the median sales prices range from Kingman, about 261,000 was the median sales price last time we checked, to Lake Havasu City, 456. So some, you know, there's some opportunities in places like Kingman and Bullhead City for a family earning, say, 90,000 or 80,000 or less to buy. But those opportunities are, are becoming less prevalent as we move forward. This table shows that at current rates with an FHA bank loan at 7.03% and 3.5% down payment. In Kingman, about 40% of the county households would qualify. You get to Lake Havasu, only 18% of the county households would qualify there. So the majority do not qualify to buy a median priced home in the county currently if they were trying to buy one. Most households, as I mentioned, have no other opportunity other than to rent, but rental vacancy rates are 1%. This chart shows what a monthly rents could be afforded by, say, a nurse earning 74,640 per year is the median income there. They could probably afford maybe a two or three bedroom apartment if they could find one. Police officer, 60,000 per year, could afford maybe 1492, at kind of affordable rent levels at 30% of your income. So people are actually paying, as I mentioned, about one in five are paying over half of their income on rent now or doubling up with other, with extended family members to afford a house. In Kingman, we've talked with city officials and planners. The demand forecasts expect about 8,100 units to be demanded by 2045 if there's adequate water. The city seems to think they have adequate municipal water rights to handle that. And there appears to be plenty of vacant and buildable lands in Kingman to address that demand. There's new interchange development opportunities likely to happen in the near term. So, you know, good potential in Kingman. That we could tell from the 307 respondents to the surveys in Kingman. There, they said, yeah, apartments are most of the demand needed now. Affordability is the biggest issue. And permitting is a bit of a hang up with the city. The feedback we heard from various parts of the county was that Kingman is probably the most onerous place to get permits approved. Mojave County less so. But, and, you know, City of Lake Havasu is pretty well built out. There's a potential for about another 1,600 units there based on the vacant land assessment that was done by the city. Most of the demand is driven by second homes lately. But again, workforce housing is needed. And a lot of that workforce housing is likely to go areas that are easily commutable to the city, Lake Havasu City, which would be to the north along the 95 corridor. Very few low income housing tax credit sites remain in Kingman. I think we only saw one or two potential sites. Whereas we found quite a few in Bullhead City and, and Kingman, not Lake Havasu City, I meant. Bullhead City, probably the most significant demand, 11,000 plus units by 2045. Lots of, there's about 1,000 new multifamily units in the pipeline currently. City has changed their development standards to permit more townhomes and mixed use development in their, in their, in their lower density zones. So they're starting to see that now. And they indicate that they do have the municipal water rights to handle this growth. Colorado City is also starting to grow. Demand for about 1,700 units expected. The city appears to have adequate water and sewer. There's potential for water district partnerships there. There's a lot of short-term rental market pressure there. But just to the north in Utah, there's about 2,000 units being planned all around that area. So that's going to take some of the heat off of Colorado City. But again, homeownership right now is about 36% there. A lot of that land was held in trust, and it's changing slowly, but it's starting to change. The growth scenarios from the state have Mojave County growing from about 0.45% low to 1.4% high. As I mentioned, you've been adding about two, population has grown about 2.1% since the pandemic. So even these growth forecasts might be on the low end of what could be expected. Working with our committee, we landed on this medium-high forecast. It seems very likely adding about 74,000 people by 2045. And as I mentioned, we convert this, you know, we, we have average household size. We know about group quarters percentages. We know about seasonal housing splits or demand, about 20% is the total demand from seasonal housing. So we'd need to plan for about 51,000 units. Somehow make sure we can accommodate about 51,000 units as a county to accommodate this growth without, you know, home prices getting completely out of whack with respect to income levels. About half this demand would be for households earning about 80% or below the income, and that's where this rental housing need is really evident. We looked at demand by location based on, again, what the city officials were telling us that they could accommodate and based on what the market share historically has been for capture rates in unincorporated areas of the county. And we find the unincorporated Mojave County is going to do accommodate the most of all the areas. We looked about 24,000 units by 2045. There's adequate land, and there seems to be water. But it's a matter of the private development community coming forward and delivering that level of supply. And then each city has their own forecast, some with seasonal housing, some with permanent housing. And we've looked at this by mix. So we understand kind of what percentage should be single family detached to really optimize the affordability component. If the private markets to take care of this without any public subsidies, they'd want to deliver the most affordable housing products. And that would tend to start to lean more towards smaller units, townhomes, cottages, manufactured home parks, and things of that sort. So these are, these tend to be the most affordable options out there for, you know, this, this half of the population that can't necessarily afford to buy a detached home. We asked the housing producers, the developers, the builders, the lenders, what the top three barriers were. They said construction costs, site infrastructure costs, which tends to mean water, sewer, hookup fees, and maybe some intersection improvements, and then the contractor availability. The community college is starting to help address the contractor availability issue with some new programs they have for certification in different trades. That's great news. You know, there's only so much you can do on site infrastructure as a county. When asked about near-term actions for the county, the recommendations came back as educational materials for property owners and people that aren't necessarily developers. In some communities, we've seen that as kind of an annual housing summit or forum that can be hosted by the county or with the cities where you have property owners that might be interested in subdividing their land, but they don't know how. They don't even know the first step. They don't understand the potential cost. They're not sure it's going to be worth it. So these meetings can be orchestrated by county staff. You can bring in experts to educate the public or just county staff members can do that, answer questions, have frequently asked questions, materials available. And developers or contractors can be there as well. The site-specific information about development requirements. Well, at least we started that with this interactive mapping tool that we've provided. So there's some more site-specific information. If somebody was to sit down and say, we're looking for a 10-acre site or a larger, we want it to be within five miles of Lake Havasu City. We want it to be near a road. We can help, county staff can now help that person find a few opportunities and work out with those property owners and see if they're interested. So that could help foster production of housing without really costing county much money. There's top three recommendations for public officials for affordable housing in general. We're back to the tax incentives for deed restricted affordable housing developments. This could be a limited tax abatement, typically 10, 15 years if they're going to have a deed restricted percentage of housing provided. Encourage new master planning neighborhoods. Sometimes county might have some land. Sometimes you might have surplus property. You can make that available sometimes in partnership with developers that are willing to build a mix of housing at deed restricted levels. And again, through development agreements, the county can work with developers to deliver infrastructure, sometimes privately financed infrastructure. Sometimes it's part public, part private. But if they're delivering the mix of housing that you're looking for or mix of business and housing, we've seen that too. As part of those development agreements, you can, you can work through that. We put together a list of housing strategies as best practices from other communities in Arizona and elsewhere with recommendations from the committee members. And we've sorted those. those into policy strategies. A lot of these are probably more applicable to the cities than it is the county, but this is good practice and the cities can then go back and look at their code and see if we're encouraging ADUs. What can we do to streamline permitting in Kingman, for example? Can we have a one-stop permitting tracking software system or something like that where people can know exactly where they are in the approval process? ADUs are accessory dwellings. Some communities will be proactive and work with the property owners so they can do what's called a shadow plat, have that ADU platted. Maybe someday the property owner is going to want to put that on the site, but not right away. But if it's shadow-platted, they know where it will be in the future or where they can add additional units on a site without coming in for major engineering approvals. Short-term rentals came up quite a bit, especially in Lake Havasu City where they're beginning to monitor the short-term rental situation, trying to at least charge a permitting fee for it. It's not quite the issue as we county-wide yet, but what it does is it crowds out long-term rentals. Airbnbs tend to crowd out long-term rentals. And so I understand there's, at least at the first stage, just begin to monitor it, maybe charge a fee for it so you can inspect it, permit it. Hard for the county to do that, but cities can certainly do that. Sometimes reducing parking, especially if you have an area that's close to schools or transit, sometimes that makes sense. You don't have many opportunities in the county for that, but there are opportunities in cities. And more flexible development standards as well. There's a number of financial strategies that have been identified through this process. I mentioned reduced fees and possible abatement for deed-restricted affordable housing, working through this low-income housing tax credit program. Statewide Housing Trust has been, I think, doubled for the next few years. So there's going to be opportunities. Again, the county staff can work with developers and cities to foster or facilitate those deals. That's probably the only way you're really going to get long-term deed-restricted housing using a mix of federal dollars. And there's some other programs. There's a down payment assistance program for homeowners the state has. There's also a national program there. Again, this could be educational materials and outreach to the community members that qualify. As far as dedicated funding, a lot of these require public vote, mostly unlikely in, in, in the near term. But the real estate excise tax and some of the retail sales tax programs that we've seen approved in other states have been used for affordable housing programs where at least then you have money that you could then use to acquire land and do these development agreements I was talking about. And the partnerships are another area that counties with limited investment can work through development corporations or housing trusts, community land trusts, industrial development authorities to create infrastructure around housing. And that way you can help create a master plan for additional housing, perhaps in strategic locations where you, you like near business parks or things like that. And it's all, it all depended on how active the county would like to be. Some counties are supportive, some are very proactive, you know, but it's a big, it's a range of, a scale of where you can participate. Generally going forward to lower-cost options or just periodic updates to your buildable land inventory, which we've, we started. That information has, we now have a database at the county of buildable, of buildable lands throughout the county. Tracking this vacant land over time and low-income housing tax credit opportunity sites, we've identified a number of them throughout the county and in cities primarily. So we do have a short list now of sites over five acres that appear to score well with low-income housing tax credits in the cities. And, you know, making sure that we have capacity at the county housing authority so that they can be proactive in attracting and facilitating some of these development agreements with low or nonprofit developers, leveraging some of the federal dollars in a good way for the deed-restricted housing for the lower-income residents that qualify and that want to work You can even finance infrastructure and rural service centers that are identified. That might include creating a consolidated solid waste disposal system or a consolidated well system that could then be financed using a utility rates or local improvement district where those property owners would pay you back for that advanced financing. Again, that's more on the proactive side of life, but it is one option that counties have considered. I'm going to let Tim walk through the buildable land inventory work just because we spent a lot of time and money on this as well and try to wrap it up here.
Okay. Great. Chairman Linkenfelder, supervisors, thank you for your time today. So really quickly, just going to go over our work on the buildable land inventory, which is sort of a separate component of this analysis that we've done, mostly using assessor data to get a sense for where vacant land, vacant buildable land is in the county. What you're seeing here is, you know, obviously an overview of Mojave County and those areas that are outlined in black with green inside of them. Those are our focus areas where we took extra care to take a look at buildable land. So to give you a sense of how this came together, we took a lot of different data components in GIS, geographic information systems, just mapping software basically, including some environmental constraints like open water, riparian buffers, floodways, washes, that kind of thing. Other sorts of things that we might want to avoid, such as parks and open space, probably not going to develop on that. Other public lands, right-of-way, and then making sure to take care, to observe general plan designations for these lands. Other components of the, the data analysis include airports, industrial sites, detention sites, hazardous sites. Those are the sorts of places that we would want to avoid in a LiTEC application and seeking out public utilities like water lines, sewer mains, that kind of thing, and then road network to make sure that those places are well set up to succeed. We've done some analysis of the LiTEC sites within each of the cities, and we, you, you can see here that, that each city has some very good candidate sites for LiTEC developments, including basically taking a look at vacant multifamily lots with greater than five acres and then scoring high on those LiTEC scoring criteria, such as being next to transportation infrastructure or water, that kind of thing, avoiding airports, that kind of stuff. So you can see that, that it's, it's pretty varied across the board. And, and each city has between four and two sites that are really good candidate sites. So hopefully this will be useful in the future when the county applies for LiTEC funding. What we've also gotten for the county to use, you know, outside of the study itself, is an interactive map viewer software where we have not just those hazards and those potential LiTEC sites, but also buildable land. And the idea here is to help educate developers, make sure that if they're looking to develop in Mojave County, they have a tool to look at candidate sites and screen out those ones that will be, that'll be worse off for being on a steep slope or near a wash, that kind of thing. And this is just another look at it. And that's, that's it for this presentation. So with that, I think I'll hand it back to Todd or Director Smith. Again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Director Smith?
So that concludes the housing needs assessment. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. I'd open it up to the board.
So I don't have any questions for you, Director Smith, but I would like to see how this might be helpful to Tammy Ursenbach, our economic development director. Thank you, Tammy. Can you just kind of explain how this might be helpful to you and recruiting businesses?
Thank you, Chairman Linkenfelder, supervisors. Yes, I've already been talking about this document with many developers already. Even the information, even though we don't have it completely finalized yet, the information in it, I've been able to share some of that information with developers, and I already have companies looking to come in. They're able to take this information and say, once it's, once it's public, once it's out there, they can take this document actually with them to the bank and say, here's proof that we need to have this many housing, new homes within the county, as well as new developing company or new companies looking to come in. They can see the need for the housing now as well as the growth that the county is doing. So businesses are looking at this document as well. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. They're looking at this document as well to say, yes, we know that there's a need and there's a need for housing and for the new development, the, the new residents coming in, but there's also going to be a need for new developers to bring in the other businesses, not just housing. Excuse me.
Okay, so even though we know all of this information, or we, we think we do, it's beneficial to people coming in from other areas to be able to have a document where they can refer to and, and get the information.
Most definitely. Like I said, it's not just for the developers, but for them to take it to the bank as well and get the funding that they need to come.
Okay, sorry about your voice.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Supervisor Angus?
Yeah. Tammy, so I have to clear up something I said earlier. I said I didn't vote for this, but I did. I was the vote that put it forward, and it was just because of that. It was because of what you said at the end. So I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Supervisor Ghul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify, I did not vote for this. I noticed on your study, you missed the fact that Lake Havasu City is surrounded by at least one section all the way around of state trust land, which is for sale. There's about 18 sections of state trust land that are for sale. So if you take Lake Havasu City limits, you go one mile in every which way, all that land is for sale. That's not reflected in your study.
It's possible it could be developed, but what we've heard was that it would not likely be for housing.
For what?
Housing.
Says who?
The public officials we talked with from Lake Havasu City.
Those folks come and go, though. Thank you, sir.
Sir, while you're at the podium, if I could ask just a couple of questions. Having completed reading all the way through the study, and I'll have my comments emailed to Director Smith very soon. But I, just going through what we have and what I have gone through so far, listening to your presentation, I do think that the contractor availability is, is an issue. The thing that I will give you guys all credit for is I do think that that new interactive map is valuable with or without an adopted housing study. I think that that is definitely of value and staff should have already been doing that already with or without a housing study. On the near-term actions that you mentioned and some of the stuff I saw, I think the county is already doing those things as far as the near-term actions. If I'm wrong, they can correct me after the meeting. As far as the long-term stuff, you know, I know that this, the cities should really, are, are playing first chair in that. City of Kingman, I know, is the primary, the former vice mayor, that they had gone into some public-private partnerships with private entities on a couple of their interchanges to get infrastructure built, and then they were going to pay them back with incremental revenues. But I don't think that the county is really the appropriate venue to do most of those things. I mean, it should be the population centers and their own independent governing boards that do those types of things, in my opinion. There's a couple of other things that I read, just in what I had gotten through already, that seemed contrary to what we're doing right now. And one of the things I read, and correct me if I'm wrong, is one of the recommendations was lot coverage ratio. Currently Mojave County has a 60% lot, lot coverage ratio that we allow, and you were recommending that we back that off to 40%. That seems like we would be going in the opposite direction.
Oh, what I meant was reduced setbacks. Sometimes we see reduced setbacks or something called lot averaging, where it's a triangular piece and we allow that property owner to still maybe subdivide it, even though, even though the individual lots might go under a minimum amount. Some would be over, some would be under. So it's more about kind of the development standards than it is coverage ratio.
All right, I'll keep looking at that. And the other thing I noticed that popped out of me is it looked like you were recommending allowing some type of, of affordable housing to be built in floodplain issues or floodplain areas or areas that were not exactly the greatest sites for, for building residential?
I don't believe we're, we're recommending that one unless it's a boathouse.
Oh, I, I did see that in there. I'll, I'll follow up with Director Smith, but I think no matter the housing study, and I don't mean this as an insult to you guys, it just seems sort of broad-brushed. And when you have a county that's over 13,000 square miles, you cannot apply the issues and what's going on in Havasu to, in my district way up in Colorado City, Centennial Park. It's not going to work. What works in Bullhead is not going to work in Kingman. I know that Havasu did a housing study. I think Kingman was looking to do a housing study. Those are the, the good places to do a housing study. I think there's a few things in here that the county should be doing anyways with her and out and a, a housing study adopted. I think those are common sense, and I think that the best, the best win out of this right now, in my opinion, is that interactive map. I think that was, that's a good thing to have in the future for economic development and otherwise, so. Any other discussion from the board members? Otherwise, I'd open it up.
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with your points you brought up about the county can't do all these things that they're bringing up. These are most, mostly cities that can do the partnership and that sort of thing. I, I do have a question of them. They kind of caught my curiosity when they said that Kingman is going to have enough water to add 6,000 more houses.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's an assumption, I think, of all of us. We, we all know that the county was successful last year in achieving an INA, the first new INA in over 40 years. That's being appealed by the corporate farms. We, we, as the county, do not have any active participation in that process. We, we hope it withstands that challenge. And then there's other challenges that have evidenced themselves that are coming up in the near-term future that if we were to give, you know, a land use approval and the camel's nose under the tent, then we basically hand over the future of the basin to corporate interests. So that's an assumption, I would say, Chairman, or excuse me, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, I'd open it up to the board. Supervisor Bishop?
Even though this is painted with a broad brush, I, I see validity in its use and if it helps with economic development and helps with, with bringing affordable housing to Mojave County that we all know that we need, I will direct staff to bring back a final draft to the board at a future meeting for yet another look and final approval.
Thank you. You've heard that motion?
Discussion, Chairman Linkenfelder.
Supervisor Angus?
Just real quick, this is all part of the initial cost, right? There's no additional cost.
Correct.
Get a discount if you quit now.
We do have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, supervisors. We do have a motion second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
As appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item number 42. Item number 42. Director Latowski. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Chairman Linginveldt, members of the board, this concerns a petition or request and a staff recommendation to accept a quarter-mile of Buckboard Road into the county road maintenance system for tertiary maintenance. This will be a new connection to State Route 66, just northwest of Concho Drive in the Valley Vista area, serving a small collection of residences.
Thank you, Director. Comments from the board? And this is your professional recommendation to approve this?
That's correct, Chairman Linginveldt, for tertiary maintenance. This will be an unsurfaced roadway.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to accept.
Heard that motion?
Second.
Heard that motion, second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Do you have it? So ordered. Item number 43. We do have one person that's signed up to speak on item number 43. Judge Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, County Manager Elters. I'm here to encourage you to vote yes on item 43. We have certain manpower shortages within the judicial offices, which are identified within that number. Our detention center is working with 19 officers currently, which means they're working 12-hour shifts and they're playing overtime that we don't need to be paying. We need to make sure we stay in compliance with the eight-to-one ratio mandated by the AOC, and allowing us to unfreeze those positions will allow us to get to a point where we're not asking our officers to work 12-hour shifts. When it comes to our clerk's office, the level of work never lessens, and the clerk's office is shorthanded at the present time. Work is piling up. There are vacancies, which are making it difficult to fully staff the windows and courtrooms within the court system. And this proposal, assuming we can actually find people to hire, but this proposal would allow us to close those gaps so that the work doesn't linger unnecessarily long and possibly avoid time standards, which are applicable to appeals and other case processing standards. When it comes to the probation officers, there's also case staffing ratios which are in play. When you freeze positions and then we lose employees, we have to come back to get those refilled, and we're attempting to make sure that we have the flexibility that our probation officers have the manpower in order to stay in compliance with the 65-to-1 staffing ratio where it comes to adults, and I believe 35-to-1 for juveniles. And we constantly slip over. We get nasty letters from people who monitor that. We get another employee and get ourselves under, and it's a never-ending process. And this will give us the flexibility to adjust course where needed. I stand ready to answer any questions the board might want to pose to me.
Thank you, Judge Moss. Any questions for Judge Moss today? Supervisor Angus.
No questions. I'm just going to make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Heard that motion, second. Any additional discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you. Mr. Cunningham there?
Director Cunningham, you want to come down to the podium? He's on his way now.
Thank you.
He's at the podium now, supervisor. Go ahead with your questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cunningham, last meeting, I think we approved six new positions, or unfroze six positions for the county attorney. Now you're asking for another one? You have a court case going?
The county attorney's position was the one that County Attorney Smith talked about, that he had a resignation the day of the last board meeting. So this position is filling that attorney position. It was in addition to the other ones requested last, or last board meeting.
Have we filled those other six positions already?
I do not believe we have filled them. We've posted them, and we're actively recruiting for them.
So we can get six, but we're going to ask for seven. That's the only question I had, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, supervisor. County Manager Elters, this is under your Director of Human Resources title, but as our county manager, did you want to lend anything to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. This truly continues to be a collaborative effort. It involves HR, finance, and county manager's office, myself. When these requests are received, they're reviewed, follow-up takes place if needed. They're vetted to ensure that they are really eligible under the hiring freeze that the board put in place, and that filling them, or not filling them, impacts the operation of the department. So we're vetting them before we're bringing them to you, the board, as you expected of us, for you to have the final say on them. But yes, we are vetting them, and it's a collaborative effort, often requires following up with the departments to ensure that these are necessary for department operation and function.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County Manager, if we approve these employees, how many employees do we have left that would be under a hiring freeze?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gould, if I understand your question, that number is really, it's changing constantly because it impacts general fund positions, and there are many of those out there. I don't have the number handy, but I can follow up with you. The point is, since the board enacted the hiring freeze, we continue to experience vacancies. People are moving on, and departments are coming in with requests to fill these positions that are being vacated. They're making a case for it. We're vetting them, and we're bringing them to you as we are here to give you a chance to consider them and concur or reject. But I don't really have the number because it's not fixed. It's constantly changing.
It was somewhat of a rhetorical question, anyway.
Manager Elters, I have one question for you. For those folks that do leave, we pay out their PTO. Are we, are we pausing on each position to recapture the PTO that we're paying out on that position before we unfreeze it and hire it again?
Mr. Chairman and board members, that has been the practice, is to wait for the PTO to run its course before we hire. However, many departments have multiple vacancies, and they have a lot of salary saving. So it's really not even affecting their overall budget. They're just coming in and making the case for the impact of an additional vacancy. So the salary saving in many of these departments exceed one or two position vacancies warrants to keep them open.
Great. Any other questions for them? What's the pleasure of the board? I think we have a motion, a second, do we not, Madam Clerk? Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do have it? So ordered. Okay, item number 44. Is the... Attorney Esslin, have you had an opportunity to have a conversation with risk management?
I have. I appreciate Joe Durner's time to talk with me, and I've provided documents to him and communicated with him about the situation.
We need to go into an executive session, or not?
If you wish to consult with myself and Mr. Durner about risk, potential, receive legal advice from the county attorneys in that regard, then yes, I'd recommend going to have a motion to go into executive session.
Do I have an interest in going into a second executive session from the board?
Chairman Linginveldt, I'll make a motion that we recess into executive session.
Thank you, Supervisor Bishop. You've heard that motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll be right back.
Can you hear me?
I mean, Joe and I, we actually talked about...
Oh, he was cheap.
All right, I'll reconvene the meeting. I'll open it up to the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Angus.
I make a motion that we approve the amount of compensation to be provided to detention facility employees consistent with the Department of Labor's findings and authorize staff to sign any necessary paperwork to effectuate the payments.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
You guys appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Item number 45. What's the pleasure of the board?
If I may, I'm asking the board to motion, for a motion to authorize the county attorney to dismiss Mojave County Case Number CV 2023-00902.
Thank you, Attorney Eslin.
Go, Major.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you Supervisor.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You guys appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Item number 46. Director Lutowski. County Manager Elters, you look like you want to...
Yeah, if I may, I'll save Director Lutowski a trip to the podium. We did provide the Fort Mojave Indian Community a copy of the IGA. It's currently being reviewed. And given the response at the meeting and the fact that they're reviewing it now, and out of respect for their ability to review and offer the board any comments before the board approve it, I'm suggesting or asking the board to continue it to the next board meeting. We'll follow up with the tribe to ensure that if they have any comments, we'll bring them back to you. If they don't, then we'll finalize it and ask you for approval at that time.
Thank you, sir. We do have one person signed up to speak. Scotty McClure, do you want to come up for your three minutes?
Yeah, I just hope we do this because, especially if we can get $7 million from them. Toby Carter and the idiots on the board are trying to put another 60,000 people in Bullhead. If we don't get more traffic off of 95, we're screwed. We might as well just stay in LA and enjoy the 405.
I'll open it up to the board. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that item 46 be continued to the next meeting.
Second.
Heard that motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Item number 47. I'm sure everybody here received notice that the Arizona State Senate is going, is planning on suing the Biden administration for the land taking that was the Bage National Monument, involving lands within Mojave County District One and in Coquettino County. We do have two people that are signed up to speak. Scotty McClure. And Philip Robinson, you're on deck.
Yeah, I hope you guys go after these clowns. I just can't believe that we honored Christian cinema that same day or the next day with the key to the city, a bullhead, that socialist. You know what I'm gonna call her.
Philip Robinson.
Morning, y'all. My name's Philip Robinson. I want to read you something. I know Travis and Hildy, you probably saw on my side, even Ron. Over the week, Friday, Biden stopped 25% of Prudhoe Bay. Even though it is Moosehead, and I'm sure you all know what Moosehead is. That... That's, it's gonna affect the Inuits up there. It's gonna infect the tourism up there. We need to stop Biden. Flat-out stop Biden. He's going into every state now. We need those revenues from Alaska. We don't see it here, but they do up there. I was up there for two, four seasons of salmon and crab. I loved it. It's getting ridiculous what they're doing. I want to read you something. Timed out on me. When you're told that mining coal is bad, but mining copper, lithium, cobalt, and nickel is good, you're being conned. You're being conned and we're all being conned for this new green deal. I oppose this. I hope you all will oppose it also and go for it. Or, I'm for it, sorry. I think you all knew where I was going.
Thank you, sir.
But thank you all.
I'd make a motion that the County of Mojave lend its support to the Arizona State Senate and become involved non-monetarily in the pending litigation against the Biden administration for designation of a massive new Bage National Monument in violation of the U.S. Constitution, outside of the intent of the Antiquities Act and in the absence of credible scientific data.
Second.
Heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You guys appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. We are adjourned.